Today is Tuesday, September 8th, and this is the meeting of the Douglas County Planning Commission. I'll call the meeting to order, and in order to determine quorum, I will ask for people to respond when I call their name. Kristy?
Present.
Bryce?
Present.
Dave?
Present.
Mark?
Present.
Brian?
Present.
Maureen?
Present.
Okay, we have seven members, that's all of us, that's a quorum. So now we'll have the pledge of allegiance. And Mark, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mark. We'll now open it for public comment. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the planning commission. Public comment cards and comments left on the county's website prior to the meeting have been compiled and made a part of the supporting materials that have been provided to the planning commission and public for review. Only two periods of public comment will be taken during this meeting, once at the beginning of the meeting and again at the end of the meeting. Public comment will not be taken on each agenda item. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person who has left a voice message on the Douglas County's public comment phone line, Once a public comment period has been opened, once public comment closes, the voice messages will be played to the public and planning commission in the order they were recorded. No more than one voice message, public comment per person, will be played during each public comment period. Douglas County's public comment phone line became available to take public comment at 10:00 a.m. Public comment will remain open for at least five minutes to allow members of the public to call or until the last caller has finished leaving a voice message on the county's public comment phone line. The planning commission wants to encourage respectful consideration of all views by members of the public. If the content of any voicemail is willfully disruptive of the meeting by being irrelevant, repetitious, slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or amounts to a personal attack or interfering with the rights of others, the voice message will be skipped to the next public comment. So the time is now 1:02. And Colleen, do we have any public comment at this point?
Colleen Cepeda, for the record, yes, we have, looks like we have a couple. I'll start with the first one.
Thank you.
Item one, this should have been an addendum and published, but truly postponed. There are three items today that should be indefinitely postponed until the master plan and community plans are updated. How many more changes are going to be brought forward before the master plan is approved? My broken record comment that community plans still apply. I say the fact that the master plan process has not been done diligently, it's time to update the community plans as the framework. Land use policies clearly state community plan applicability, so outdated community plan descriptions must be updated. Example, LU policy 6.2, rural areas and communities are those where development of rural character exists or is developing new development. It further goes on to state that the land use map, if services are available at the appropriate levels, if other policies of the community plan and master plan have been met, do the right thing. Conduct community plan workshops for the remainder of 2020 and complete the master plan in mid-2021. With over 7,000 homes approved, where is the demonstrated need for any additional land use conversion? So many of these projects have been on the county's books for years. A few examples are Clear Creek Phase 1, 266 homes with 16 built, and Phase 2 of 312 zero built. Valley Knolls Single Family, 178 zero built. Valley Knolls Multifamily, 96 zero built. Mountain Meadows and State Genoa, 75 zero built. Most egregious request today is item five, discussion on a tentative subdivision map to create 181 more homes in the North County Douglas-specific plan. Up to 1,300 homes have been proposed there. A portion of this site is located within a receiving area or land use designation. At the time this receiving area was approved, the zoning was FFR 8,000, which allowed for 5.4 units per acre. Any increase in density above the units will require these transfer of development rights. This area does not include development standards for residential development, and multifamily is not designated there either. This should not be approved.
Okay, let's see. One more.
Jim Slade. As you know, the Attorney General determined that the Min and Town Board and Planning Commission both violated the open meeting law last year in discussing the Park Ranch Master Plan Amendment and Development Plan in an agenda item that was supposed to only address the master plan map update. That was well beyond what is required to be a clear and complete agenda item. Yet that same illegal agenda then went on to the county commissioners. Background information on this agenda item, staff states that when the county was notified of a possible OML violation, that they re-agendized the item last September. I've asked Mr. Booth how, when, and by whom the county was notified of this possible OML violation, but I've not heard back from him yet. I told the county community development in early July last year, however, that they had violated the OML well before the planning commission and county commissioners served this item the first time. During my comments at the Min and Town Board meeting on July 3rd, 2019, I suggested that Director of Community Development, Mr. Delaire, had violated the open meeting law by addressing issues well beyond a supposedly clear and complete agenda item. Mr. Delaire, who was seated right behind me, laughed out loud at my comment. Not only was his reaction unprofessional, but he was wrong, as determined by the Attorney General. Community Development's obstinacy in not addressing this issue meant that they brought the same flawed agenda item to the planning commission and county commissioners. Only after those meetings did the county finally admit that they had a problem. The county commissioners in another meeting then rescinded the previous actions, which forced the planning commission and county commissioners to rehear this item. Due not only to the open meeting law violation, but also to a failure to follow the personal notice requirements for master plan amendments. The county's charade that the rehearing was to foster public confidence was false and misleading. It was due to violations of law. While Mr. Delaire brought a flawed agenda item to the Min and Town Board, the planning commission, and the county commissioners, it is up to each board and their attorneys to make sure that it doesn't violate the laws. You failed in that duty. Due to that, the actions taken were rescinded, and you had to start all over again. A great expense to the county in time, energy, and dollars. This wasted the valuable time of the planning commission, the board, and many members of the public due to the controversial nature of the item. Community Development, to my knowledge, has never publicly apologized to the planning commission, the board, or the public for having wasted enormous amounts of time, energy, and money. They should have. They still should.
Looks like that's it right now, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I have 1:08 p.m. So that's beyond the five minutes when public comment began at 1:02. So unless you have another one that's coming in, Colleen, we'll move forward. Anything else?
Nothing so far.
Okay. As of 1:08, opening public comment is closed. The county's public comment phone line will remain open to allow for closing public comment to be recorded as the meeting progresses. And again, that phone number is 775-783-6088. So we would be happy to have additional public comment during the meeting or when we close the meeting. I'll now move forward to approval of the agenda. I have two announcements to make concerning our agenda today. First, on Agenda Item 1, the Master Plan Amendment and Zoning Map Amendment for the property on East Valley Road. Due to an error in the description of this item, we will not consider it today. I apologize to the applicant, to the planning commission, and to the public. Second, in order to accommodate the applicant for Item 5, who has a scheduling conflict, we will be moving to that as the first item on our agenda. We will then consider the remaining items, number 2, number 3, number 4, and number 6 in the order that they appear in the agenda. We will then, for discussion only, have a status report on the master plan update. I appreciate everyone's understanding of these changes and would be happy to answer questions before we move to a motion to approve the agenda. Any members of the planning commission have questions on the agenda that will be considering today? Okay, if there's no questions, then is there a motion to approve the agenda minus Item 1?
Move adoption of the agenda minus Item 1.
Maureen moves adoption of the agenda minus Item 1. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mark seconds the motion. So Maureen has moved the revised agenda, Mark is second. Is there any discussion? Brian, do you have discussion?
Do we need to say anything regarding moving 5 to first or just the approval of the items on the agenda, not the order matter?
I think we're just approving the agenda so that the deletion, and we have the option at any point during our agenda to move items further up or further back in the order.
Perfect, just making sure.
Yep, thank you for your question, Brian. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, I'll call the roll on approval of the agenda. Kristy?
Hi.
Bryce?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Maureen? We couldn't hear you, Maureen.
Yes.
Thank you. And the chair votes aye, so the vote is unanimous, 7 to 0. We'll now move on to approval of the minutes. Does anyone have any corrections or comments on the minutes? This is the joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners held on August 11th, 2020. Okay, seeing no questions or comments, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll move we adopt the minutes.
Maureen approves adoption of the minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Brian seconds. Is there any discussion on approval of the minutes? If not, I'll call the roll. Kristy?
Aye.
Bryce?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Maureen?
Hi.
Chair votes aye, so the minutes are approved unanimously, 7 to 0. So we'll move on to our first agenda item. And I'll read this into the record. This is for possible action, discussion on a tentative subdivision map to create 181 total parcels comprised of seven common area parcels and 174 single-family attached residential units within 58 triplex building footprints. The project site is located on a 14.34 acre portion of a 45.44 acre parcel on the south side of Topsie Lane between Riverwood Drive and Center Drive. The property owner is Robbie Lehman, Big George Ventures LLC, represented by Ryan Sims, Axion Engineering, and Chris Baker, Manhart Consulting. APN 1420-05-201-009, Development Application DP 20-0154. Sam, you have a presentation, and then we will hear from the applicant.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. This is Sam Booth, Planning Manager, for the record. This item, I would note, just because of the change in the agenda, starts in your packets on page 180, and for those following along at home. As the chairman read there, Ryan Sims from Axion Engineering is also on the call, and Chris Baker from Manhart Consulting. And I do believe the property owner is with us as well, if you have any questions. With that, I'll just begin to go through my presentation. So the project information on this subdivision map is that it's located within the North Douglas County-specific plan. This is on the east side of 395, south of Topsie Lane. You may remember this North Douglas County-specific plan from revisions that were made earlier this year and late last year at the planning commission. Currently, there's a master plan designation on the property of receiving area and MFR, multifamily residential. In the zoning designation of the area is multifamily residential. Within the North Douglas County-specific plan, which you can see in the map on the right here, highlighted in purple, the starred area is the location of this subdivision map. The flood zone is X Unshaded, which is not within any flood zone. Background for the site, again, a fifth amendment to the North Douglas County-specific plan was approved by the Board of County Commissioners earlier this year. That amendment modified a 203 acre portion of the total 624 acres that compromise the North Douglas County-specific plan. It increased the number of single-family detached units with that development plan approval. It decreased the single-family attached units and increased multifamily units. It removed a large portion of commercial development, which, as you may remember, included a planned hotel, a casino, and a movie theater. And this subject site was rezoned multifamily residential with that latest amendment. The applicant today is proposing 174 single-family attached units subject to the MFR zoning designation and development standards within Douglas County Code. And this is on a 14.34 acre portion of the subject site. The land use you can see in the image on the left is a combination of receiving area and multifamily residential zoning, excuse me, future land use. You can see the receiving area is the orange, almost L-shaped, or upside-down L-shaped area. The multifamily is in the southeast corner there. The zoning is the image on the right. And, excuse me, because both layers are turned on in this image, but the orange color is indicating that it is multifamily residential zoning. Let's see. The MFR zoning allows up to 16 units per acre. The applicant today is proposing about 12.03 units per acre. When this receiving area was first approved with one of the previous amendments to the North Douglas County-specific plan, the zoning at the time that the receiving area was added as a master plan change, the zoning was SFR 8,000, which of course allows for 5.4 units per acre density. Our receiving area standards describe that any increase in density over the base zoning district requires transfer of development rights. So if you can think that today, or previous to the zoning change, we had 5.4 units per acre density. And now we just had the latest amendment at the beginning of this year, now allowing up to 16 units per acre density. That zoning change is not able to be conditioned, but what is able to be conditioned is the subdivision map approval as it moves forward. And so in the staff report I described and on the screen here, there are about 21 acres of receiving area that exist. And so if we look at 5.4 units per acre, that would allow a total of 110 units within that receiving area on the applicant's parcel here. And this entire parcel is split between this application for what is Big George Residential Unit 3 and also the previously approved Big George Residential Unit Number 2. That's in the southern portion of this receiving area. And within the receiving area, it proposed 35 units. So this project is now proposing 133 units within the receiving area. So altogether, a total is 168 units possible within that receiving area. Therefore, the increase from 110 to 168 is going to require 58 units of transfer of development rates. We have that included as condition A9 with the proposed condition for your consideration today. Excuse me, I'm going backwards here. Okay, on the screen here, you can see the applicant's proposed development plan. These are all standards of the MFR design and development standards from Douglas County Code and design criteria. At the top of the slide there, you can see RV parking spaces are required at one space per eight units, which comes out to 22 spaces, which the applicant is providing. That is in the northwest corner of the development. You can see an area here for RV parking. There's a total of 407 parking spaces being provided with the design of the site. Douglas County Code is that two spaces must be provided for every unit, one covered and one uncovered, and additionally, one guest space for every four units. The applicant points out in their justification, and staff agrees with them, that not included in this calculation for the spaces being provided are the additional spaces that can be provided within the 20-foot driveways that are proposed in front of each of the units. So there is additional parking that can take place in those driveways. Douglas County Code requires certain amount of amenities for the total number of units. The applicant has met, and in my opinion, exceeded that requirement. They're providing a pool, a clubhouse, and you can see those kind of in the center of the site here. And in the northeast corner of the site, another amenity they're proposing is a dog park. I have also talked to the applicant, and they have agreed to include a linear trail or path on the west side of the development. This common area on the west side of the site, most of this at the north end of the property is a buffer zone that was approved with the North Douglas County-specific plan, intentionally to buffer from the existing single-family residences to the west of the site. So the applicant, you can see that those units are set back. The back of the lots actually are set back over 50 feet from those properties. This is just kind of an open space that's left there, and we've asked, you know, if they could include a trail and walkway basically from the guest parking that's at the north end there down through this area to come out somewhere between at the southern end where a few of these other guest spaces are. In green you can see is the common area open space that's being provided. Douglas County Code requires the applicant provide 25% open space. And with this design, they're proposing 33% of the project to be open space. They're pointing out, noting, an HOA will be utilized to maintain that open space and common areas. As far as the traffic is concerned with the site, an analysis was prepared and provided for the site with the 2020 North Douglas County-specific plan amendment. And that report considered 192 units for this area, while the applicant points out only 174 currently planned. So a trip generation for those 174 units estimates 969 average daily trips. This would be 100 less than that initial traffic impact study. It notes 61 a.m. peak hour trips, to be about six less than was previously estimated, and 85 peak hour trips, about nine less than previously estimated. Utilities on the site are provided by Douglas County. We will provide water and sewer to the project area. And Douglas County has provided a will-serv letter from December of 2018. The project will connect to a water main within Topsie Lane and a water line within Tyson Drive. It's located within the North Valley Sewer Service Area, and the project will connect to sewer improvements proposed with Phase 1B of the North Douglas County Residential Unit 2. The applicant is proposing two phases for the build-out of the development. You can see that in the image on the right of this slide. Phase 1 will include 84 lots for a total of 28 buildings. This will also include both entrances and utility main connections and all of the proposed amenities, all upfront with Phase 1. Phase 2 would include 90 lots, over 30 buildings, and of course, the associated utility improvements to serve each of those lots and buildings. So the findings for approval of a tentative subdivision map are in the packet on pages 190 and 191. There are eight findings for approval of a tentative subdivision map. Staff believes each of these findings can be made in the affirmative. And based on the ability to meet those findings, staff is recommending approval. And at the bottom of this slide is a recommended motion for the planning commission's consideration. That's all I have for my presentation, Mr. Chairman. Again, Again, I think the applicants are on the line and may also have a presentation.
Thank you very much, Sam. If anybody on the applicant's team would like to go ahead and unmute themselves and make a short presentation, then we'll move to questions and comments from the planning commission. If you could please, again, and I'll direct us also to the planning commission members. When you begin your comments, please state your name. That'd really help Amy when she's transcribing the minutes. And especially for the people who are our guests, if they could state their name and organization so we can have that clarification for everyone.
This is Louis Carriola from Manhard Consulting. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for that introduction and instruction. Joined today by Chris Baker, the Planning Manager at Manhard. And also on the line, we have Ken Hendricks from KDH Builders. And from the applicant, Big George Ventures, Rob Lehman and Ray Sidney. I think Sam has done a great job already presenting the project, but I'd like to share my screen and just run over a couple of short slides to make some points relative to the project. While we're pulling up this PowerPoint, I would like to take an opportunity to thank the chair for accommodating Mr. Lehman's request for moving our, our item up to first on the agenda. Mr. Lehman does have an obligation with the school board. So Sam's already run over the location of the project. I just thought maybe I'd call some attention to the fact that the applicants here, Big George Ventures, have undergone a roughly three and a half year process to get to this point. Master plan amendments, specific plan amendments, zoning map amendments, multiple public meetings, collaboration with staff to ensure that not just the amendment process was followed appropriately, but that the tentative map that's brought forward here today is in accord with the conceptual plans that were approved with Amendment 5 in February of 2020. I think notably what we should recognize in looking at the project is the conceptual plans presented a higher density than Unit 3's tentative map presents. The conceptual plans also included less unit, I mean, I'm sorry, more units. So we have less units, lower density. Per Douglas County standards, the design provides 10 additional parking spaces than are required and additional open space in addition to lower traffic counts.
Louis, we're not seeing anything on your screen. Do you have something that you can put up there?
I apologize.
That's okay. Technology is a new thing for many of us. Or if you need Sam to, to call up anything that he's, he had in his presentation, if that would help you. But I see your screen are coming up now.
Is that not sharing?
That looks good. Very good. Go right ahead then.
All right. My apologies.
No problem.
So I'll quickly recap. You know, the, the applicant's three and a half year process included specific plan, master plan, and zoning map amendments. The fifth amendment was approved in February of 2020. And here today, you're reviewing a tentative map that is not only in accordance with the approved conceptual designs from Amendment 5, but as displayed on this slide, represents a less intense development than approved in February. So by less, we mean less units, 174 units housed as triplexes in, in in 58, in 58 triplex buildings. And then less density. So the MFR zoning designation allows 16 units per acre. The amendment conceptual plan proposed 15.4. And as you'll see here, our development proposal only includes over 12 units per acre. We have additional parking, more open space, and less ADT, less AM and peak hour trips. Sam Booth did note this, but I'd like to point out again, the proposed first phase would include all of the amenities to include a pool, a clubhouse, a dog run, and all of the RV parking that would be required for every unit to be constructed. I, I think with that, I can conclude my presentation. And again, we are joined today by a number, a number of other representatives. I neglected to mention Ryan Sims from Axion Engineering, who designed the tentative map is also here if you had questions specific to the engineering portion of the tentative map. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Louis. Would anybody else on behalf of the applicant like to make a brief comment? Okay, thank you. I will bring it back to the planning commission then for questions of, of the staff or the applicant or comments that you'd like to make at this point. Please go ahead and just raise your hand and I'll recognize you. And Deva Cola, I can't see you raising your hand, so just jump in anytime you've got a comment or a question. Anything from members of the planning commission? Maureen, please go ahead.
I have a question on page 194, and this is for our engineering staff. Paragraph four, A4, I guess it is, paragraph two, it talks about the water rights. And it says, if the applicant is unable or unwilling to dedicate and assign water rights, then they must meet the water right requirements and pay a fee. Why would we want them to pay a fee? Don't we want to maintain water rights in Douglas County? I'm concerned if we allow an in lieu fee, those water rights can be sold off at another date. Is that making sense?
Thank you, Barbara Resnick for the record, Community Development Engineering. And Maureen, I'm sorry to say this, but this is something that our Public Works Department would answer much more quickly. It's my understanding, and Chris Baker, I don't know if you can speak to this too, there was some agreement with the North Douglas County specific plan on water rights. So they already have a water rights bank. So I think that's kind of what we're playing with here as far as them having to pay when they would have to pay additional fee in lieu is when they rent out of that, is my understanding. Does that make sense?
I just think for me personally that maybe we should have a report on this at some point next year because it's my understanding that Douglas County wants to retain as many water rights as we can. And if we allow an applicant regardless of the project to pay a fee as opposed to assigning water rights to the county, they're going to choose to pay a fee. That, that's just my feeling. And I will find out from Public Works at another time what this all means.
And it could be the base basin that the water rights are coming from too, as to whether or not we already have enough that they can pay the water, pay the fee in lieu. So yeah, it, it, there's a lot of variables that can come into play on that. So I apologize, I can't give you a direct answer there for that.
Okay, I'll do some research. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Other questions or comments from members of the planning commission? Bryce, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bryce Klutz for the record. My question is for Sam Booth. Mr. Booth, just to clarify, there's nothing in here that the applicant is asking to be amended. It's, it's all in line with what's been previously approved, correct?
Yes, that's correct, Bryce.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bryce. Anybody else on the planning commission? Mark, please go ahead.
Yes, for the record, Mark Minra. So my question is on TDRs. So this is either for the applicant or Sam, whoever wants to answer it. But there are possibly 168 units in the receiving area. The applicant is proposing 33 units in the receiving area. They already have 110, so we're really only talking about buying 23 TDRs?
Mark, I can speak to that. This is Sam Booth, Planning Manager. So 110 units are what are allowed by what was the base density when the receiving area was established. In most cases in the county, when the receiving areas were, were established with the 96 master plan, those were all designed to be established in areas where the base zoning was A19. But in other cases, and this is one example of that, when a receiving area was added later, there may be a, a different underlying zoning. In this case, it was single-family residential. So 110 units could be built on the site without TDRs. A total of 168 units are possible between this application and the previously approved unit number two. So whether they record that map first or this map first, what we're noting with this condition is that 58 transfer development rights would, needed to be utilized and dedicated to the site.
But that's if they build 168 units. I think we said they wanted to build 133 units.
Okay, so excuse me for the confusion there, and this is Sam Booth again. The 133 units is with this application, but there were 35 units already approved with the residential unit number two, Big George Unit Number 2. So there's 35 units already approved on there. When you add this 133 in, now there's a possible of 168 on this one APN, on this one parcel. So that's the, the increase from 110 to 168 is the need for the 58 TDRs. There are some variables in there. If you remember from the previously approved subdivision, a portion of those units, I believe nine of those units were within a planned site for the school corporation. And it was only if the school were to deny accepting that site would those lots be developed. Those are, I'm including in this, in this count. So if for some reason it's less dense, okay, then 58 units won't be needed. But I tried to, I tried to work through the math here and describe it that way in the condition so that future staff or the applicants, you know, several years from now, that we can look at this to determine the number of TDRs that are required. Because the county code requires the TDRs to be dedicated to the property when the final map is recorded, not at the time of the tentative map approval.
Okay, one final question. So are the average number of units in the receiving area the same as the average number of units in the non-receiving area? Or is applicant favoring not putting as many units in the receiving area?
I would let either Ryan Sims or Louis speak to that. However, one thing I can point out with the design is, as I talked about in my presentation, there is that buffer zone on the west side of the site that was required. So there is, I would say it's less dense because of that buffer area between this development and the single family. But Ryan can talk to the design maybe a little more.
Sure. This is, for the record, Ryan Sims, Axion Engineering on behalf of the applicant. Just because of geometry and where the receiving area lies and where the site is, you know, we end up with 133 in the receiving area. So that leaves 41, sorry about that, 41 outside. And again, that was just by the geometry of where our Tyson Drive, our proposed main access for these two tentative maps comes in. So yeah, I mean, we would have liked to favor the, the MFR zone, non-receiving area, non-receiving area, area, but you know, the way the site lies, you know, we did have to push those lots into that area.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Other questions from the planning commission members? I just have two real quick ones, Sam. First of all, is this adding any new housing units? These have already been approved by us. This is just approving the subdivision map, so we're not adding anything today. Is that, is that correct, Sam Booth?
That's, that's mostly correct, Mr. Chairman. The, the density in the proposed number of units was, was brought forward to the planning commission and to the county commissioners with that last amendment to the specific plan early this year, February of this year. And, and they showed the proposed number of units, which was higher than the 174 that they're proposing today. So the, as Mr. Carriola pointed out, the multifamily zoning and the land use were established and establishing that, that maximum density. When they proposed their conceptual development plan, they showed units on this area and it was more dense than what they've brought forward today. So to that, to that extent, no, it's not an increase in units. The only caveat, you know, beyond that is that these lots are not created, you know, yet as of today. So this approval is, is the tentative map and they would have, you know, once the, once the map is recorded is once those lots are officially created.
Thank you, Sam. So actually what we're doing today is, is less units. We're removing units of, in this action, although that could be subject to further action. And then, can you answer the question also? Does this comport with the Indian Hills, Jacks Valley Community Plan, the North, the North Douglas County specific plan? Those were both 2012 documents, since we still haven't updated the master plan. But does it comply with all the, the goals and the policies and the requirements of those two existing documents?
Yeah, so Mr. Chairman, Sam Booth again for the record. Those goals and policies of the Indian Hills and Jacks Valley Community Plan were considered when this came forward in January and February for those master plan amendments. And there, and there were several goals that I called out in that as being applicable or meeting, meeting the goals and policies. Strictly, the tentative subdivision map findings do not require policies of the master plan that it's in conformance with. But the planning commission and the board found in February that yes, it, it did meet the requirements of Indian Hills, Jacks Valley Community Plan. That plan, we, we've discussed with the commission and with, with the Board of County Commissioners, really describes two separate areas in the North County. It describes the Jacks Valley area, which is a different development pattern than the Indian Hills area and even, and especially this, the area of this specific plan. This specific plan contains some of the most dense development in the county. And it's been planned that way since really it was upzoned with the, the original specific plan approval in the early 2000s. So there, there are policies and goals in the master plan that talk about the development of this site. And previous to this last amendment, the development of the site was mainly commercial, large-scale commercial with quite a bit of single-family residential. So again, as I recapped earlier, quite a bit of the residential uses were changed. There was an increase in the multifamily zoning and, and a decrease removing that theater, casino, you know, those type of uses. But the applicants demonstrated at that time that it was going to relieve some of the traffic average daily trips and sewer and water usages by not having some of those very large-scale commercial uses.
Thank you, Sam. My, my point here is just that it does comply with what is in existing plans. But I agree with those who say we need to do a revision of those plans. We need to modernize them. We need to update them. But we can't stop anything from going forward until we do that. So that's why we're really, we're moving fast on the master plan to get those things updated. So we don't find ourselves in this situation where we're dealing with community plans that might be somewhat dated. So I think we're in compliance with everything we need to be now. We've voted on that in the past and approved that in the past. And I do think this subdivision map meets or exceeds all of the, of the required findings. So I'll move on to any other members of the Planning Commission that want to ask questions or make comments at this point?
I do want to make a comment.
Go ahead, Maureen, please.
If I can, this is Maureen Casey for the record. I just want to comment that I like this project. And I think that they have given us much more than what is required by the code. We see way too many projects that come in with just the minimum requirements and they are developer-friendly. They're not resident-friendly. And I find that this project has more of the resident in mind. I love the engineering report. It's fantastic. And I really loved the comment about clayey soils. I didn't know that was an actual word, but I really appreciated that because that's something I would say. So it's a very complete packet that they have given us. I appreciate that. And I want to thank the applicant and staff for making it so easy. Thanks.
Thank you, Maureen. If there's no other comments, then I would again call people's attention. The findings that were required to make are on page 190 of your packet. There's eight of them, and the staff believes that all the findings can be met. So if you do feel that this tentative subdivision map should not be approved, if you can point out which of the finding, which of the eight findings that you do not agree can be met, that would be helpful to, to us and the Board of County Commissioners when they consider this. If there are no further questions or comments, then I'd be entertaining a motion. And the motion can be found on page 180. Sam, I don't know if you have a slide that you want to put up. But if we don't have other comments, let's go on to a motion and if we have discussion or we can vote. Maureen?
Okay, I'll recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners of Development Application DP 20-0154, a tentative subdivision map to create 181 total parcels comprised of seven common area parcels and 174 single-family attached residential units within 58 triplex building footprints on a 14.34 acre portion of a 45.44 acre parcel based on the ability to make the required findings as outlined in the staff report, presentation, and public comment.
Thank you, Maureen. She's made the motion of approval. Is there a second? Mark seconds the motion. So Maureen has made the motion. Mark is second for approval of Development Application DP 20-0154, the tentative subdivision map. Is there discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing no question, no discussion. I'll call the question on the motion to approve the development application. And we'll take a roll call vote on this. So Christie?
Hi.
Bryce?
Hi.
Dave?
Nay.
Dave, do you have a specific finding that you would like to cite for your disapproval?
Yes, in the past, I've said that the groundwater basin doesn't have the capacity to pour all these additional units. And until that is proven otherwise, I can't support any development.
Thank you, Dave. Mark?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Maureen? I didn't quite hear you, Maureen.
Aye.
Thank you. And the chair votes aye. So in this votes, there's six votes in favor and one vote against. So the development application is approved. We'll now move forward to item number two. And I'll read this into the record. Item number two is for possible action. Discussion on a tentative subdivision map to create 54 total parcels with 51 single-family attached parcels and three common area parcels ranging in size from 963 square feet to 28,750 square feet. The project site is located on 4.24 acres on the west side of Gilman Avenue at the intersection with Chichester Drive and is within the Gardner Ville Community Plan. The property owner is Matthew Carter, represented by Karen Downs, Manhart Consulting, Development Application DP 20-0180. And Sam, you are representing community development on this one and Karen Downs for the applicant. So Sam, you can go ahead and proceed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Sam Booth, Planning Manager for the record. I would note that this item starts on packet page 72. And this is an application, as you read, sir, for a tentative subdivision map to create 51 single-family attached parcels. I would note a change from the staff report to today. The applicant and I discussed that we called out, actually in both of our reports, that there's a common area A, B, and C described separately. But these common areas are actually one common parcel, which will be 1.34 acres in size. So technically, the project will, will contain 51 single-family attached parcels and one common area parcel. The site is located on the west side of Gilman Avenue, just at near the intersection of Chichester Drive. The APN for the site is 1320-33-310-001. The master plan future land use of the site is multifamily residential. And that's the same case for the zoning of the site, which is multifamily residential. The flood zone of the property is X unshaded, and there is a small portion of AE floodway on the site. Background for this development really starts that earlier this year, the applicant submitted an application to community development for a design review, which is just a staff level review to check essentially conformance with design standards and county code. That was approved by staff in May of 2020. And with this application, the design review for the site was for 51 four-lease units to be developed on the existing 4.24 acre parcel. And that would be without any subdivision into individual lots. This application was approved at that time by the Water Conveyance Advisory Committee in April of 2020. And the design review was also approved by the Town of Gardner Ville in April of 2020. More recently, an update is that this tentative subdivision map itself was taken to the Town of Gardner Ville and approved just on September 1st. But the design of the applicants today is to still propose 51 units. But these would be 50, 51 units on their own parcel and basically would become single-family attached style development and sold individually, you know, essentially as condos. Just to describe this, but the land use and the zoning of the subject parcel, which you can see kind of highlighted in blue there, is multifamily residential. You can see Chichester Estates to the east, the ranch at Gardner Ville to the north, and there are some duplexes and triplexes and the ranch at Gardner Ville there to the north. To the south is a property owned by the Town of Gardner Ville. And the Martin Slough Trail is, is also to that area in the south. The development plan of the site includes amenities and parking and guest parking as well as RV parking as required by county code. So you can see the RV parking called out kind of at the, at the edge of the site here. Guest parking is shown with the red squares on this image. The amenities, as far as there is a playground, kind of a shade structure barbecue area. And the third one that I have shown on the left side of this map really is a connection that's being made by the applicants to the Martin Slough Trail on the Town of Gardner Ville property. And as well as you can see, that trail goes around the outside of the development, behind each of the units. And there's also an internal trail through the open space parcel in the middle, middle of the property. I have a note here just pointing out that the driveways or streets here are technically called drive aisles. And they will be maintained by the HOA. And there is to be no on-street parking in these areas. So there is a reduced width to the streets. But there's no on-street parking and there'll be every, the common areas and the streets will be maintained by the HOA. The multifamily residential development standards allow up to 16 units per acre. This proposed project is proposing 12.03 units per acre. Douglas County Code requires 25% open space. For a multifamily project like this, the applicant is meeting that 25% open space requirement. Again, as I noted earlier, change for the staff report with, as it relates to the open space and common areas are that those three common areas, A, B, and C is described in the reports, will be one common area of 1.34 acres. That does include those drive aisles, which are created via private easements. Parking on the site, I showed that to you in the image on the previous slide. But Douglas County Code requires two parking spaces per unit, one covered, one uncovered. This is provided within the garages for each of the units. Additionally, one guest space is required for every four units. And that equals a total of 13 guest spaces. That's exactly what the applicant is providing with this application. And finally, RV parking is required at one space per every eight units for a total of seven, which the applicant is providing as required. Traffic for the site, the applicant estimates that there are 373 average daily trips with 32 PM peak hour trips and 25 AM peak hour trips to the site and, and for this number of units. The traffic review letter submitted concludes that the trip generation for the Chichester area will actually be 6,228 less average daily trips than originally proposed with the Chichester subdivision. Excuse me for the, for the slide there. This development, could have spoke to this earlier in the application or the presentation. This parcel was originally a piece of Chichester Estates when it was originally subdivided. And just as recently as fall of 2018, the Chichester Estates Homeowners Association voted to de-annex this parcel from the subdivision. But the original traffic reports and studies for the site included apartments and MFR density development on this site for the Chichester Estates subdivision. Utilities for the site are provided or will be provided from Gardner Ville Water and MGSD sanitation. And the applicant has provided will serve letters for those utilities. The project will connect to an existing sewer and water main in Gilvan, Gilman Avenue. And additionally, they've provided will serves from MGSD, Indy Energy, Southwest Gas, Chartered Frontier Communication. So once again, this is a tentative subdivision map and there are eight findings that need to be made for the approval today. Those findings and a description of each is found on pages 78 and 79 of your packets. And staff believes that those findings can be made today. And at the bottom of your screen is a recommended motion for approval. With that, I'll conclude, and I believe the applicant is also with us for a presentation, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Sam. Do we have Karen Downs or someone from Manhart who would like to make a brief presentation?
I am here. Good afternoon. Can you hear me and see me?
Yes, does this hear downs?
Yes, hi, I'm Karen Downs. No, no. The tab says Manhart. I can see me. And then if also I can share my screen, I have a presentation. Two, is that okay?
Please go ahead.
Take me just a second. Okay, are you able to see it? It's the presentation?
Yes, we can see it.
All right. Very good. Okay, so again, as Sam did a great overview, so I will go quickly over hopefully what we don't need. But again, this project is the village at Martin's Meadow. It's a tentative map. It's at, Sam went over that, Gilman Avenue and Chichester Drive. It has a master plan of multifamily residential and zoning of multifamily residential, which there are no proposed changes to this. So again, what we, what is here now is a tentative map. And Sam went over a little bit of how we got here. But originally, we applied for a design review application, which was through staff, a staff review at Douglas County, but also went through Town of Gardner Ville for their review and approval back in April. We submitted the application in February. As you know, some significant things happened in March here in our world too. So this project has gone, been affected a little bit by COVID and just needing some flexibility with some market conditions as they have evolved. So since that time, when we got Town of Gardner Ville approval and then subsequent Douglas County approval for that design review for lease product, that was like a four-lease apartment project. The applicants came back to have a little bit more flexibility for a single-family designed project here. So that's what this is. It is essentially the same project. There's 51 units, just like there was with the design review. 51 units and common area tentative map. It meets the same multifamily standards that it did through design review. And it just allows a little more flexibility. So it went through Town of Gardner Ville review for design review in April of 2020 and then just in September 2020 for the tentative map. For site plan, I, I too wanted to go over a little bit of the numbers we had. Sam did some, but the total site is 4.24 acres. We have 51 single-family units and then a common area parcel. The open space required for multifamily is 1.06 acres and we're providing 1.15 acres. And then keep in mind too that it's surrounded by open space too. So it, it is where the houses are here on the perimeter are facing the open space as well for Mount Martin Slough that's around here. This open space area is the tot lot area and then the common space around, common area around here. That open space acreage, the 1.15 acres, is what meets Douglas County's requirement of, I think it's a minimum of 15 foot wide open space. It meets that definition. The total common area provided outside of the roadways is 1.96 acres. And that includes just all of the common area, even that is, that doesn't meet the open space definition, definition. So Sam, one of the, when we were looking at the conditions and whether to provide this as three common space parcels or one, I think we got the numbers a little bit wrong. But the total common area provided is 1.96 of common area, and that does not include the roadways. The roadways are an additional 0.93 acres. So again, our, the project has been designed to promote that adjacent open space of the Martin Slough. And then to, for the interior lots where that common area is in the middle, for all the homes to face those. So all of the homes either face that common area or the open space. There is an extensive walkway system throughout to provide pedestrian connectivity among the units and then also through that open space area. As we noted too, the driveway access is provided from the rear with the driveways from the rear so that the homes are all facing the street and that common area. And then it was also designed to implement the Town of Gardner Ville design guidelines they just recently adopted, and then also Douglas County's multifamily housing standards. We have, I know they're small to see on the screen. There are, hopefully you can see them. There's two different building elevations with four floor plans. Some of them- Some of them, cursor keeps, there's two unit buildings and three unit buildings here too. It'll provide a varied streetscape. And then also for the, the four different floor plans, the units range from 1,116 square feet to 1621 square feet. They range from two to three bedrooms and two to two and a half baths. And then they also have a two-car garage that have been, I don't know if you're able to see my cursor, but they all have extended storage areas that's designed for storage spaces in the garage. That's all. I can address any questions. We can, we add a little bit. I know Sam talked about the private drive aisles that we have that are more narrow. They're 24 feet of pavement, 28 feet total wide, total width and will be signed for no parking. We talked about the traffic. There was also, this project went through WCAC and got approval back in April. And there are two areas of drainage where there's offsite, it goes to an offsite drainage that would require Town of Gardenville approval for that offsite drainage. Again, with reviewing this project two times, the town has indicated they would agree with this low-impact design for the drainage that we've proposed. And of course, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you much, Karen. I'll bring it back to the members of the Planning Commission now for questions, either of Sam Booth or of the applicant. Are there questions that people have at this point? Maureen, I'll recognize you.
Is there parking on Gilman?
Let me make sure I'm getting off. Are you back to your regular screen and off of my?
Yes.
Powerpoint? Okay, good.
I can't recall. There's street parking on Gilman.
There is not parking right in front there on Gilman. No.
Okay. And also, what are the market conditions that required you to go for, from a for lease project to a for sale project?
So they indicated that it is a have-to. They indicated the market is more for a for-sale product. They had the project marketed as for lease and it came, they went through that process. They fell out of escrow on that and are now looking to market, to have an option to market it for sale as well.
Okay, this is for Sam Booth. Sam, by them moving from for lease to for sale, did, is, the process is different when you have a one-owner for lease project such as an apartment building or for-sale townhomes. They skipped some steps on this?
Thank you, Maureen. Sam Booth, Planning Manager for the record. It's not that they skipped steps on this. It's that the, I guess what you're alluding to is the first approval process that the applicant went through. And that's just that county code does allow them to, within the multifamily residential zoning, if you're not proposing to subdivide to create individual units as they are today, a property owner can just do a designer view. Again, that's just a staff level review for conformance with the code. And then you can move right into pulling your site improvement permits and building permits on the site. So if everything were to be built on the one four-acre parcel, they could move forward with, with construction without going to a public hearing like the Planning Commission or the Board. It's because of the request today, as they're proposing to create 51 individual parcels that can be sold on their own, that requires a tentative subdivision map and requires a planning commission and board approval.
That cut time off the process? If they go to a design review through staff for a for lease project or come in for a for-sale project?
It, it could be about, about the same in the time. If a subdivision map were approved and then they would come through with a designer view after the subdivision map. This is just that they've gotten the designer view approved prior to the subdivision map. Probably, you know, in the, in the long run, it may have taken them a longer amount of time, just how this was stretched out from the spring, you know, to the subdivision map approval today.
Thank you, Maureen. Anybody else on the Planning Commission with the questions that they need to ask of staff or the applicant? Mark, go ahead.
So this question, first question is for Sam. So on page 75 of the packet, you say that we have an X unshaded flood zone and an AE floodway. Can you remind me what the definitions of those are and where on the site the flood zone or the floodways located?
I can, I can do a portion of that. Barbara Resnick from Engineering can help me with that, Mark. This is Sam Booth again. The X unshaded means that it is not within the flood zone. AE is, is the floodway. And there's a portion, I believe it's at the southern portion of the site that's within the floodway. Their site design does not include putting any, placing any of these units within that floodway there. And Barbara maybe can speak to how we've conditioned that or how the design impacts the floodway.
Barbara Resnick, for the record, yeah, they are conditioned to, oh, here I brought up one screen and I'm missing the other. Just so you know, it's the AE floodway. It is at the southern portion of the property and when it's a, it's called a regulatory floodway. So when there's a regulatory floodway and then another shading shown as just AE, that is the floodway fringe. Now, Sam, I don't know if you can show the exhibit where they're proposing a detention basin right down there in the southerly area within the floodway. So it's not a structure. They're not going to bring in any new fill. And so there, there's, there will not be an impact to the flood zone from, from what we're requiring and what, what they're proposing. So I was trying to find the condition of approval on the, for the flood zone. Hold on. Okay, so yeah, the condition of approval is that the applicant must comply with the requirements of 2050, which is our floodplain ordinance. And then to be even more so specific, we said that all storm drain improvements within the AE floodway shall be improved at grade, no fill allowed. And they can build up to the floodway without having to do an HNA study if that's, if that's how they come forward. If they come forward with fill, then, or they're like, oh, we're going to throw this structure in here, then it's a new book. They're going to have to do an H and H study and submit something to the county and onto FEMA for review and approval. But from what they're proposing, it's, it's just the detention basin that should not have an adverse impact on the floodplain.
Let me follow up with that. So the detention basin where they're storing all their stormwater runoff is actually they're dumping it in the floodway. So do they have a detention basin other than the floodway? And, you know, if they have to treat this stuff before it goes in there, where are they going to put the treatment stuff?
Yeah, so the detention basin is going to release it at the original rate of the 25-year event, it back into the slough. So they're, they're mitigating it so there's no new increase going over to the area that can't handle it already. That'll be part of their technical drainage analysis too, to be able to demonstrate that. And what was that other part you said, Mark?
So you have to put in, I don't know, a sand oil separator, something to clean the water before it goes into an irrigation ditch. How are you going to keep that from washing away in a flood?
Okay, yeah, or it can be landscaped accordingly because there are plants out there that will filter out oils and then if the ponds deep enough, deep enough to take care of the sediments. We do have another condition in here. You're with me while I'm trying to find it. Oh, okay, so condition C1, the applicant shall submit inspection and maintenance records annually from the date of the notice of completion to the stormwater program manager. Now, I'm going to kind of put tongue-in-cheek there because that's actually, if it's a public-maintained facility, but because it's going into the irrigation ditches, they have to treat it. And that was one of the requirements with water conveyance. So anytime you send any storm water into an irrigation system, it should have a sand oil interceptor, smart sponge, you know, vegetation within the design of the basin to help take care of cleaning the water before it goes into those irrigation facilities.
Okay, so maybe I'm not asking the right question. Let me try and rephrase it. Where are they putting the sand oil separator or the detention basin with grass in it so that it treats this in the event of a flood? So if we have a flood, there's all this water coming off that's full of oil and dumping into their detention basin, will the flood wash it away?
Okay, good question. Sand oil interceptors usually go, they can go right into the basin or into the catch basin before there's a storm drain pipe that leads, leads into the basin. So it can be treated in a location like that, either the catch basin or they can do a stand pipe within the, within the detention basin and have it treated in there. It, it, it depends on the approach because the vegetation within it, that can handle it too. But I am sorry, Mark, I forgot the other part of your question again. I'm
Basically, is the treatment for this thing on property that is not in the floodway? Or is it on property that is in the floodway?
To the south, the treatment, I would expect to be outside of the floodway. Because if you're to look at the flood zone, it's just the very southernmost portion. So it should be treated before it goes into the basin, unless they have some facility within the basin. It all depends on the design and what they submit. So Karen, did you want to interject with the thought there? Is that okay?
I just was going to agree that it is corrected as outside of it.
Okay, thank you.
And is that a condition for staff?
That is a standard within our design, within the design criteria is that it's, when it's a sand oil interceptor, it goes through that before it goes in the basin. But if it's an LID or, you know, if it's a smart sponge within the catch basin, it just depends on what they come in with when they're doing their improvement plans.
So again, forgive me, but the catch basin is not in the floodway?
No, no, those were not. No.
And I guess this is for the applicant. So we've met the bare minimum requirements. Can you name three items that you went above the bare minimum requirements? And please don't say that you got 27% open space base instead of 25%.
No, I'm not going to talk about the amount of open space for sure, but where we have gone over and above is this, well, sorry, I have it up on my screen, not for you, but where it has the extensive pedestrian walkway system and access to that open space as well, interior and exterior. The architectural details that are here, they were designed specifically to meet the town, both the Town of Gardenville and, or to, to make sure that the architecturals meet what is desired. It's more than what is required for Town of Gardenville and Douglas County. Three. I would say those are the primary two. Well, the walkway system, the available, availability of the open space around it and trying to access that open space, provide access and then the architecturals.
Okay.
And I won't talk about the 2% extra open space.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Mark. Those are very good questions. Bryce, would you like to go ahead next?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bryce Klutz for the record. With respect to the conditions, I'm just curious, A1H is the only condition that's bolded regarding the discharge of the stormwater into the irrigation ditch. And I was just curious, kind of following up on Mark's questions, why, why is that bolded versus all the rest of the conditions?
I can, I can speak to that, Bryce. This is Sam Booth, Planning Manager for the record. That's just simply an error on my part as I entered the conditions into the staff report. That that was, that was bolded as it was being added in there. Not bolded for any reason of importance or anything like that. Means that as this would move forward to the commissioners, if it's approved, I would remove that. I would also note that at the top of page 80, it says under item A for conditions of approval, important to note, this was just an internal staff note and we would remove that out of the staff report as well. So the bolding and the important to note at the top of the page there were not necessary to be included. And sorry for the confusion there.
Bryce, any other questions on your end or should I move to Maureen? Okay, Maureen, you had your hand up. Please go ahead.
We have a letter in our supplemental materials from a woman who lives on Concho Trail, which is adjacent to this. She's concerned about the trees being removed to accommodate this development and that some of the neighbors will lose their views. Can anybody address what she's speaking about? Is it a plan to remove trees that are growing along the edge of the ditch and the ponds there in order to accommodate the development? And what views could she be speaking of that will be impaired by the development?
Karen, do you want to try and answer that one or Sam, have you been out there and, and looked at it or?
I, I don't know. This was the first time I've heard that, so I'm not sure where she is. But assuming she's up by the drainage ditch, there will probably need to be some trees. If the trees that she's talking about are in the town right-of-way, then obviously those would not be removed. If there's some where the, where the sidewalk is going, then yes, they would. I'm not sure where, where the ones, where, what tree she's talking about.
Eric, maybe you could address it, if you know that area well.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Sam Booth. I'm sharing my screen here. This is our aerial image from our GIS. This is the, the site right here. Couple of things I can, I can show that we've been describing and probably should have shown this earlier. But yes, at the north end of the site, you can see a, you know, thick brush and trees that is along the ditch, that is just north of the site. And so this northwest corner of the site here is where the detention area that Barbara was describing would be. Actually, I think, you know, we were talking about its impact on, on the floodplain. The floodplain on the site is actually at the south end in this area here. So when Karen pointed that it is not within the flood zone, she's correct. Let me, I can turn a map on here. You can see just this small corner of the site is the, is the flood zone. When I look at their development plan, that is, it's open space and there's one or two of the RV parking spaces that would be in this area. But the units, they designed not to be within that. But you can see at the north end of the property, there's not a flood zone here off of, off of the ditch. I believe that's the park ditch. And you can see the, the culverts under Gilman Avenue here for that. So if the, the public comment that was submitted, if she lives off of Concho Trail, likely it's one of these units here to the north. And so there is some thick, thick trees in this area that are on the applicant's property. And you know, I mean, quite honestly, I don't know that county code speaks to preserving of those areas. It's not within a wetlands or a floodplain. But there will be some open space areas and some, you know, new landscaping that's broadly some, you know, new landscaping that's brought in. I know there were some conversations, at least I believe, at the town of Gardenville, same type of aspect, and with the water conveyance committee as well.
Thank you. I just didn't want to not address her concerns.
Thank you, Maureen. Eric, did you have any comments that you wanted to make? Or are there other planning commission members that have questions that they want to raise at this point? Brian?
So I thought I heard something mentioned regarding the parking spaces, and I'm looking through the packet and not really finding anything regarding the driveways. Was there a mention of something about 20 feet, 28 feet, somebody can park there, someone can't? Can somebody clear that up for me right now? Because when I'm looking at the driveways, all, you know, all sorts of different sizes, and I have parents that are a part of an HOA where, you know, different sized driveways come with different rules, and I'm not quite clear on what, you know, we've written as conditions for the different driveways and things like that.
So this is Sam Booth. Brian, the required parking per county code is two spaces per unit. They're providing a two-car garage that would accommodate that. And then the guest spacing, or excuse me, guest parking is required by code are the additional guest spaces that are being provided. The driveways themselves vary in length, as you pointed out. Many of them are just four or five feet, and so would not accommodate any parking or guest parking. So strictly, the parking on the site would be within the garages with each unit or in the guest spaces. And just beyond that, I would defer to the applicant.
That is correct. There's no driveway, none of the counts of the driveway for parking. It's just the two spaces in the garage and the 13 guest spaces and the seven RV spaces, which could be used as overflow parking.
So when we're looking at the count, we've met exactly the code. However, you know, when I'm looking at this as far as driveway parking, we're not going to restrict driveways to have the ability to have a car parked in it, correct?
Correct.
So essentially, there is a little, they're not part of the application, but there is a little more parking than what is shown, is what I'm saying.
That is correct.
The thing I've said this over and over when we get these projects is, I mean, I don't know, half the city neighbors on my street, they can park in their garage. You know, restricted to two garage spaces, they fill up their garage, yeah, they're parking on the street, guest spaces, I mean, just all sorts of problems. I mean, this flows all the way to Heritage Park, down to Overland there on the corner. You know, if there's not enough parking within this area, we're going to see a flow over into, you know, neighboring areas, you know, down to the businesses that are down the street there, thereby affecting the businesses' ability to have their customers park. You know, I know, I don't like meeting the minimums, you know, I do appreciate that there is some driveway space, we wouldn't be restricting. What I was getting at is in the HOA that my, you know, parents are a part of, you know, no one was allowed to park in the driveways even if somebody could fit a car. It was kind of ridiculous. And so they've actually gone through the legal steps to remove that restriction. And so I was just making sure we don't have something like that that could allow for extra parking if somebody needs to, you know, have it. But, you know, certainly looking at minimums, and I appreciate Mark's question, you know, looking at where we're going above and beyond, you know, because, I mean, I know meeting the minimums is all we need to do, but when we look at the community as a whole, is it the best thing to do? You know, I really like to look at, you know, what we're doing extra for the rest of the community. So, thank you.
Yeah, I would add too on that, that the, each garage has the additional storage space in it. That's kind of an extra that they provided aware that there's not excessive parking here. So they did make sure that each garage has its own separate storage area in the garage so that the garage can be used for parking.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Maureen, back to you.
One last comment about the parking. There may be four or five feet of a driveway that someone can park in, but it's going to be perpendicular, it's going to be across the driveway, not in the driveway. And because these driveways are not deep enough for a car to actually park in. And, and I agree with Brian that the minimum of parking in our code is inadequate. I know we're going to get to it next year, but I, I really dislike the way that people have to fight for parking in their neighborhood, whether there are people in the adjacent neighborhoods that take the overflow, or the businesses in the neighborhood, or the county streets, which Gilman doesn't have parking, so I don't know where people are going to park unless they choose to park up and down Chichester. But Brian, thank you for bringing that up. I think that's really important consideration, not just for this project, but for all multifamily projects.
Excuse me, thank you, Maureen. Any other questions from the planning commission? I just had two real big picture questions. Barbara, you may be able to answer one, and Sam, the other one. Barbara, on the conditions, the engineering conditions, you went through one of them for Mark, but following up on page 81, A4 says the applicant must provide evidence that conditions placed on the project by the Water Conveyance Advisory Committee pursuant to the meeting on May 4th, 2020. That's the meeting, they approved that right at that meeting? And were there any conditions that you thought were significant or that were not met that they did not agree to?
No, they met the requirements with water conveyance and are coordinating, I believe, Karen alluded to it earlier, that working with the town of Gardenville for the discharge into the Martin Slough and Park Ditch, because they need to have agreement there.
And they approved this unanimously? Were you at that meeting, or did you review the minutes of that meeting, Barbara?
No, I don't believe I was at that meeting. Sam, do you, were you present? Do you have any recollection on it, or?
Yeah, this is Sam Booth. I was at the meeting, and Mr. Chairman, apologize, I don't remember specifically the vote there. I know there was quite a bit of conversation about Mark's points about, you know, protecting the discharge from the detention area into the park ditch, and there was conversation about that. Ultimately, they approved it. I don't remember the exact vote. Not sure if Karen remembers that.
I see Eric's here too, but this is Karen Downs. Yes, it was a unanimous vote.
Great, thank you. And then Sam Booth, would you consider this kind of a project infill? They're pretty close to a lot of services, they can probably walk to places, ride their bikes. Is this an example of infill?
I would consider that to be infill development, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, as I described, kind of in the beginning, this was a leftover parcel from Chichester Estates subdivision that's been zoned multifamily for quite a while, planned for apartment, multifamily type densities for quite some time, and it's a leftover piece that's been sitting here. So you have development to the north, the Ranch of Gardenville to the east, Chichester. Just adjacent to the south is the Martin Slough, but beyond that, there's a new church under, under construction today, and the Overland Restaurant, and then, of course, all the commercial along 395. So just about the, the only undeveloped portion is directly to the west of the site, is just one undeveloped piece of property.
Thank you very much, Sam. Mark, additional questions or comments?
Yes, this is for Karen, and Eric, I know that you're not part of this, but you can probably answer this as well. Are the cleaning and maintenance easements for the ditch put on the map? And are we sure that they are being adhered to so that whoever has to clean that ditch is not, you know, getting squeezed by buildings or anything?
Thank you, Mr. Ed Rip, Eric Nielsen, Gardenville Town Manager. If you're referring to the park ditch to the north, then yeah, the town has the obligation to maintain that and keep that free. And the ditch is located within its own, its own, it's on town property. So the, this, this property, this development of this parcel is not able to encroach on the town properties. There's plenty of room for us to maintain the park ditch.
Thank you.
Yes, and that was something also that was discussed too at both meetings, so they are on the map as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Eric. Anything else from the planning commission? Okay, then again, I would remind people, the findings are on page 78 of the packet, and the recommended motion, and Sam Booth or Sam Taylor, if I could just ask for your clarification, when we do the recommended motion, I think you would advise we change the 54 to, we're going to charge that to 52 total parcels and 51 single family attached parcels in one common area? I got my numbers right? Good. Okay, so that would be the recommended motion. If you could either read it off the screen or change the 54 to 52 and the one common area instead of three. So unless there's further discussion, I would be happy to entertain a motion at this point. Bryce, would you like to go ahead?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll move to make a motion based on the ability to make the findings outlined above and subject to the recommended conditions of approval. Staff recommends the planning commission, oh, I'm sorry, is that the one I'm supposed to be reading?
Yes, you can read that one off the screen.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'll start over. Based on the ability to make the findings as outlined above and subject to the recommended conditions of approval, staff recommends, planning commission recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners of Development Application, DP 20-0180, tentative subdivision map to create 52 total parcels with 51 single family attached parcels in one common area based on the ability to make the required findings as outlined in the staff report, presentation, and public comment.
Thank you, Bryce. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Kristi seconds the motion. So the motion is to approve development application 20-0180, tentative subdivision map. Is there discussion? Okay.
For me.
Beg your pardon?
Eric, I have a question.
Go ahead, Maureen.
I, I can't, while this project squeaks by on all the findings, I still can't support it, do I have to have a finding to attach to it?
In my judgment, you can make any vote that you want to make. It's always appreciated if there are specifics that can be attached to that vote, that's helpful to the Board of County Commissioners. But every member is free to vote yea or nay according to their preference.
Okay, because my issues are the minimal parking, and the way that this got to us, I, I do believe that they may have submitted it as a for lease, but their intent all the time was to be a for sale project. And I feel pressured for, that we're being pressured to approve something that is different than what was originally submitted.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Any other discussion or debate before we call a vote? Okay, seeing none, the motion on the table is approval of the development application for the tentative subdivision map. So those in favor will vote aye, and those opposed will vote nay. And we'll start with you, Kristi.
Aye.
And Bryce?
Aye.
And Dave?
Nay.
Okay, do you have a comment or a finding that you would like to cite?
That's the same prop, one I've been making. The county commissioners had prom, promised us about a year ago that we'd have a hydrogeologic study done of the basin, and we have not seen that, so I can't support any, any development until we have that promised study.
Okay, Dave, thank you for your comments. Mark?
Reluctantly, aye.
Mark votes aye. Brian?
Aye, can I make a comment as well? You know, just as we see more of these projects coming forward, I mean, we're, you know, we're trying to make it affordable, you know, looking at the square footage and stuff, I guess it's a little more affordable having the three units, but, you know, parking is a serious issue. I understand Maureen Casey's, you know, concern, you know, it's a concern I have, you know, having lived in bigger cities, you know. I do approve this, I do think they meet the findings, you know, squeaking by, you know, as others have said, but, you know, just squeaking by, you know, I don't know how long we should allow people to just squeak by. Maybe the findings are too easy, you know, maybe some things need to be reconsidered, and if we're writing this master plan update, maybe there's something we can, you know, snatch in there that can help. And I think we really need to improve this area of, you know, the county.
Thank you, Brian. Maureen?
Nay.
Maureen votes nay, and the chair votes aye. So on this vote, there's five ayes and two nays, and the motion is agreed to. So now we'll move on to item three, and I think I'll let people know that after item three, we will take a 10 or a 15 minute break before we go on to the remainder of the items on the agenda. So I'll read item three into the record. This is for possible action. Discussion on a tentative subdivision map to create 17 industrial parcels raising, ranging in size from approximately 1.9 acres to 2.2 acres. The project site is located on 38.36 acres at the southern terminus of Nolan Road between Hayborn Road and Business Parkway, and is within the airport community plan. The property owner is Ray Van Winkle, VNC Construction, represented by Susan Pansky, APN 1320-05-002-013, Development Application, DP 20-0182. And Sam, you will be making the presentation, and Susan Pansky for the applicant. So Sam, you may go ahead and proceed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Sam Booth, planning manager for the record. This item, the Nolan Road tentative subdivision map, starts in your packets on page 124. This is a tentative subdivision map for 17 industrial lots. The APN is 1320-05-002-013, and there's currently not an address for the subject site, but you can see it on my slide in the image here, highlighted in blue. It is at the southern terminus of Nolan Road. You can, to orient yourself here, you can see Johnson Lane is the east-west road at the north of the map. You can see Starbucks Way in the very large building for the Starbucks facility, just a couple of properties to the east. To the south of the site is the airport, and is Bliss Road, is that road that you see going along the north side of the airport there. The master plan designation of the site is industrial. The zoning of the property is light industrial, LI, and this is within flood zone, X shaded. You can see the master plan industrial future land use in the image on the left here. You can see the LI, Light Industrial Zoning District in the image on the right. Again, this is, this development is for 17 industrial lots, proposed to average two acres in size. This would be ranging from about 1.9 to about 2.2 acres for each of the lots. The development is designed at about 2.25 units per acre density. The lots will meet the minimum width and depth standards per Douglas County Code, and the light industrial zoning requires a minimum of one acre lots. As I just said, they will meet that minimum lot size. There will be a total of about 4.44 acres of street right of way dedicated with the subdivision map. The applicant is proposing to extend Nolan Road through the site to the south to connect to Bliss Road. This extension is to be designed as an urban local road, and the applicant has submitted a traffic study that estimates these 17 lots will generate about 1,760 average daily trips with 210 peak hour and the AM trips and 210 PM peak hour trips. The study concluded that this level of traffic would have a minimum impact on the existing roadways. Intersections identified in the report would maintain current levels of service except for the Nolan Road and Johnson Lane intersection, which is just at the north of the site here, which would fall from the level of service B to a level of service C. As far as the utilities are concerned, the development would connect to water and sewer service provided by Douglas County. There's an existing 10-inch main on the site, and the applicant has submitted an intent to serve letter from Douglas County Public Works. Additionally, they've submitted- Uh, additionally, they've submitted will serve letters from NB Energy, Southwest Gas and Frontier. Um, this project is proposed to be constructed in one phase. Uh, and so with the proposed conditions, uh, they will require recording of the final map within four years of, uh, tentative map approval. So once again, this is a tentative subdivision map, uh, includes findings one through eight. In your packet, these would be on pages one twenty-nine through one thirty. Uh, staff believes that these findings can be made and is recommending approval of this item. And as you noted, uh, Mr. Chairman, Susan Pansky is available, uh, representing the applicant, uh, and I do believe she's on the line.
Thank you very much, Sam. Uh, Susan, would you like to go ahead? And if you need to share your screen, you can do that, or, uh, Sam can help you with, uh, anything you need to put up?
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission, Susan Pansky for the record, representing VNC Construction on this project. I also have on the line with me today Jonathan Lesperance from Lumison Associates, the engineer for the project, so he's available for questions and comments as well. And I will share my screen. I just want to speak to one item. Thank you, um, Sam, for that thorough presentation. I, you really covered everything that I would have covered, so I'm not going to reiterate it. But I did want to just bring up the site plan that we have for the site and just note that we are also requesting a roadway easement abandonment as a part of this project. So you can see it highlighted in yellow here on the left side. It's a fifty-foot roadway easement that isn't needed as a part of this project because we are extending Nolan from its current terminus on the north side to all the way down to Bliss Road. Um, we've reviewed the conditions of approval and are in agreement with all of them. And I'm happy to answer questions if you have them, as well as Jonathan for the engineering side. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Susan. Uh, so we'll go right to questions, uh, from the members of the planning commission. Um, please go ahead and raise your hand or just jump in with questions that you might have. Anybody with questions? Okay, I don't have any questions on this one. It seems pretty straightforward. Um, the recommended motion again is on page one twenty-four of the packet and the required findings, as, uh, Sam noted, start, uh, there's four of them. They start on page one twenty-nine of the packet. So if I could, uh, have someone make the, uh, recommended motion?
Hey, I will do it. I will recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners of Development Application DP twenty dash zero one eight two. A tentative subdivision map to create seventeen industrial parcels ranging in size from approxi- male- approximately one point nine acres to two point two acres on a thirty-eight point three six acre parent tract. Based on the ability to make the rec- required findings as outlined in the staff report, presentation and public comment.
Thank you, Maureen. Is there a second? Mark seconds the motion. So Maureen has moved and Mark has seconded approval of the development application DP twenty dash zero one eight two, the tentative subdivision map. Uh, is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, I will call the roll. Those in favor will vote aye and those opposed will vote no. Uh, Christie?
Aye.
Dave?
Nay.
And Dave, did you have comment you wanted to make?
Please, I'm my same as my last one. The county promised they would have a hydrogeologic study done and it has not been completed yet.
Thank you, Dave. Um, excuse me, Bryce, I skipped you.
Aye.
Bryce votes aye. And, uh, Mark?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So on this votes, there are six ayes and one nay, and the motion is approved. So at this point, I would like to take a, um, fifteen-minute break. I think it's about ten minutes to, uh, three, so we'll come back at, uh, uh, three oh five and we'll continue with, uh, agenda item four. So let's, uh, recess for fifteen minutes. Thank you. And, uh, I'll call the Planning Commission meeting back to order. And I see that we have all seven Planning Commission members in attendance, so we'll proceed with our agenda. Our next item is, uh, item, uh, four. And I'll read this into the record. For possible action discussion on a tentative subdivision map to create thirty-two single-family parcels. and one public easement parcel ranging in size from approximately eight thousand and one square feet to twenty-five thousand four hundred and two square feet. The project site is nine point two-two acres in size and is located at one-two-eight-zero Dresslerville Road at the northeast corner of Dresslerville Road and Centerville Lane and is within the Gardner Ville Rancho's Community Plan. The property owner is Bentley Family LTD Partnership, represented by Keith Rubin, R.O. Anderson Engineering, APN one-two-two-zero dash zero-nine dash three-oh-two dash zero-zero-six Development Application DP nineteen dash zero-four-eight-six. And Sam Booth, you'll be making the presentation for community development and Keith Rubin for the applicant. So, Sam, you can go ahead and start your proceedings. Sam, you may be muted here if you can start over again.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Sam Booth, Planning Manager for the record. This item is a tentative subdivision map, as you just read, sir, for thirty-two single-family parcels in SFR eight thousand zoning. The APN is twelve-twenty, oh-nine, three-oh-two, oh-oh-six. The master plan designation of the site is single-family residential. The zoning of the site is SFR eight thousand, which is a single-family, eight thousand square foot minimum lot sizes. The flood zone on the property is A-H, A-O, and X unshaded, which is not, which is not any flood plain. You can see the, the site highlighted in blue in the map I have shown on the screen. This is at the intersection of Centerville Lane and Dresslerville Lane. Basically there at the corner, you can see the existing commercial development, new systems. And this vacant parcel is located just behind that. The land use, as, as I mentioned, you can see the map on the left is single-family residential. And you can see in the image on the right, the zoning of the property is single-family residential eight thousand. There at the corner, the new systems property is zoned neighborhood commercial. There's an existing development to the east, which is also zoned SFR eight thousand. To the north is some ag land, zoned A-nineteen. Background on this site is that the, the parcel is located within the Gardner Ville Rancho's Community Plan. And this parcel was the subject of a master plan amendment in twenty-seventeen to change from commercial future land use and receiving area to single-family residential future land use. And then subsequently, after that master plan amendment in twenty-eighteen, there was a zoning map amendment that was approved for the property to change from A-nineteen and neighborhood commercial zoning to single-family residential eight thousand, which the zoning is today. The applicant is now proposing to develop thirty-two single-family residential lots in one public easement parcel ranging in size from eight thousand square feet up to twenty-five thousand four hundred square feet. This slide here, you can see the applicant's proposed development plan and subdivision map includes an access to Dresslerville Road to the south and to Centerville Lane, which is also State Road seven fifty-six to the west. You can see the design of the lots at the northwest corner of the property. You can see a stormwater detention area here. The access onto Centerville Lane is, as shown here, is a right-in, right-out. This was as conditioned and approved by NDOT, and we have a letter of approval from NDOT that required this right-in, right-out access only. Additional things to, to point out or mention here would be, one of those is that the Gardner Ville Rancho's asked for an access to an off-site pond that's part of the Cedar, Cedar Creek Pond to the northeast, basically east of the site there. It was accessed through a parcel of that subdivision. And for them to be able to get in and maintain that detention pond, they have to cross across that private property. And so they asked, and the applicant provided with this subdivision map, a twenty-foot-wide paved access to that, you can see this small triangle-shaped parcel, so that the GID can get in there to maintain that detention area. Traffic for the site, the development proposes two points of access, as I pointed out, one to Centerville and one onto Dresslerville. Again, NDOT issued the encroachment permit and with the right-out, right-in, right-out turning movement. The applicant has submitted a trip generation study, which estimates three hundred and sixty-four average daily trips with thirty-four P.M. peak hour trips. The applicant notes, and the conditions require that the project contribute traffic improvement fees as required to various intersections. Utilities and phasing, the water and sewer will be provided by the Gardner Ville Rancho's GID. And there is a will-serv letter in the packet from Gardner Ville Rancho's GID. Additionally, the grid board approved the tentative subdivision map, three to two, at their September board meeting. The applicant has provided will-serv letters additionally from NV Energy, Southwest Gas, and Frontier Communications. This project is proposed to be developed and constructed in one phase. And so the provided conditions require the recording of the map within four years of the tentative approval. Secondary access will be required to be provided by Douglas, as Douglas County Code requires, prior to the completion of the twentieth unit. The findings for approval of the subdivision map, findings one through eight need to be made in the affirmative. Those are in your packet on pages one-fifty-nine through one-sixty. Staff believes the findings can be made to approve this project. And at the bottom of the slide here is a recommendation or recommended motion for approval. That concludes my presentation, Mr. Chairman, and Keith Rubin is on the call for representing the applicants.
Thank you very much, Sam. Keith, you can go ahead if you'd like to share your screen, or Sam can help you with anything else, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, Keith Rubin, R.O. Anderson Engineering, representing the applicant Bentley Family Limited Partnership. I really don't have anything additional to add to Sam's presentation. I think he covered all the aspects of it thoroughly. We do, and are in agreement with all of the staff recommended, recommended conditions. So if you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to respond to them.
Thank you very much, Keith. We'll come back to the members of the Planning Commission with questions at this point for either staff or Mr. Rubin. Go ahead and raise your hand and I'll recognize you. I can go, jump in, and I want to compliment the supplemental comments that were submitted by John Sheridan, who is one of the trustees of the Gardner Ville Rancho's GID. I think he did a very thorough job, and we always want to take into account the, the comments of the people in the communities, particularly those who are members of the GID. He did note, and Sam, you mentioned this too, it was a three-to-two vote on this project at the Rancho's GID Board. He did mention a couple of things on traffic that Keith or Sam Booth, if you could comment on. He talked about the, the cut-through that people would be using to go from Dresslerville to Centerville and what we could do to prevent that traffic from being a detriment to the neighborhood. And then he also talked about the number of, of trips that this project would generate in combination with some of the other building in the area. So Keith, I don't know if you want to start with that, or Sam, if you have comments that you would want to make. But I think that's something that we should discuss and address.
I can go if you'd like me to, Sam.
Yes, Keith, go please.
So the, the big concern that, I think the big concern was at the grid meeting, was this possibility and their concern about the cut-through traffic. There which, and really, when you look at it, it's only one turning movement that they're concerned about, and that would be going, and maybe I should share my screen for this, Mr., let me make that request. Okay, so if you can see my screen with Dresslerville Road here.
Yes.
So the concern is traffic coming through and then using basically this route as a cut-through when there's a peak hour where you have cars backed up at this intersection. That's, that's their concern, and their concern really was, is with future residents to move in here and start complaining to them because it would be a grid road and having to pay for these additional mitigation measures to try to address that. So we agreed at the grid meeting to work with their engineer to do a, what's called a delay study at this intersection, and that delay study would look at how long it takes to get through this intersection at peak hour, and particularly this right-turning movement as opposed to coming through this subdivision. And then what you do is that difference is you start providing mitigation to slow that traffic down. So, for example, the placement of stop signs, chicanes at the intersections to narrow the traffic and the drive widths. Also placing, they've got some signs that flash at you, basically saying what your speed is and what the speed limit is, things of that nature to try to alleviate that concern in advance and not wait. And we agreed to work with grid and their engineer to do that study and look at those alternatives.
Thank you, Keith. I also think maybe one solution is to put up some speed bumps in there because that certainly slows down the, the through traffic and doesn't have a big impediment on the, on the neighborhood traffic. So that might be an option, too. If I could follow on with one thing, maybe Sam Booth, you can address this. I think Mr. Sheridan makes a valid point that we really need to try, when we can, to amalgamate all of the individual traffic increases. Because I noticed in this one, the engineering study did say that while the, the total number of trips might be three hundred and sixty-four, the AM peak might be twenty-eight and the PM peak might be thirty-four, so that's not very much at all. But do you think that's something that we could work on as a global issue and the engineering? Traffic people could come up with some ideas as how we get a better grip on what the, the overall nature of the travel is when you accumulate all the projects? I think that's worthy of something down the road for us to, to, to consider.
Yes, Kirk, I think that's something, and I see Tom DeLara, Community Development Director, is on the line. But that's something that Tom has discussed and wanted to look at, is a comprehensive view of the additional impact of each subdivision as they come forward. You know, as I think Public Works reviews these applications as they come in against the existing transportation plan and the numbers that were put into the analysis for the transportation plan. So every five years or so, depending on when those updates get approved, all the cumulative, you know, impacts from each of the developments that have been approved are added into that plan. But yes, understand Mr. Sheridan's comments that in between those updates to the transportation plan, you know, each additional subdivision does have impacts there. What, what they attempt to do is based on the existing traffic numbers in the transportation plan and the projected numbers of the development, then estimate what the impacts would be on certain intersections and require contributions from the developers for that. That's all, I should probably speak to that item. I'm not an engineer. Tom DeLara can probably do a much better job than myself, or I'm sure Keith Rubin is familiar with, you know, those things from the applicant's contributions for this project.
Yes, Tom, I'd like to hear from you on this one, so go ahead, Tom.
This is Tom DeLara, Community Development Director, for the record. Yeah, Kirk, this is something that, that John and I have talked about as well from our, from our public work staff. And, and he is, you know, analyzing the, the, this traffic count based on the twenty forty numbers from the projected numbers from the transportation plan. So that's, that's what, that's what everybody is analyzing these intersections and designs on. And so the, I think there's two things that were a problem or, you know, considered an issue at grid. One of them was the through traffic, and, and I think with the plan that Keith is proposing, that would be helpful for sure. And the new study on, on time, on how to get through that intersection. Also, it's a state highway, seven fifty-six is the state-maintained road. Comes from in-town and goes to Dressler at that intersection. And it's my understanding that the, the, the project actually has a permit from NDOT on that. So the spacing requirement, you know, that, that was listed at the intersection there, NDOT has given them a permit for that design that you've seen. So, so that has already been issued and is waiting on the rest of their approvals. So, so NDOT wasn't concerned about the spacing from the intersection of Dressler back to the intersection of the, of the resi, of the residential development. And with the right-in, right-out onlys, you know, where they're not crossing the traffic. And I think they even have a commitment to install some curb on seven fifty-six on the turn lane so that traffic can't turn left there. It is going to be, is the improvements that were needed to get that approval.
Thank you very much, Tom. Maureen, I saw your hand up. Did you have comments on this subject or another subject you'd like to go ahead with?
Yes, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but aren't there warrants that need to be met in order to install stop signs for traffic control?
There, there are. We, we, they're, they're quite substantial, actually. And I've, I've been through this process once before, but the board can, can add a stop sign in, in particular cases. It's not, the stop signs aren't to be used, and specifically says that in the MUTCD to be used for, you know, controlling traffic or slowing traffic down. But in certain circumstances, if there's other pedestrian-related issues, you can make, you can make a judgment call on that. It would be difficult to just add stop signs here. I, I think with, with the way that development is, you've got a, you've got a T-intersection, so obviously the one lane's going to have to stop with the traffic going out onto the, onto, I think it's Dressler Lane, would not, wouldn't have to stop. And, and, and so there are, there are requirements that should have to be set and made in order to, to issue those stop signs or install those stop signs in the development.
That option is out the window for controlling traffic and neighborhood infiltration later on down the line. And from my experience, I live in a subdivision that has speed bumps. And people who want to make a left turn from Lucerne onto three ninety-five, cut through our neighborhood, and they don't mind the speed bumps at all because they can't make a left onto three ninety-five. There's no signal there, there's no stop sign, there's nothing. So I don't see speed bumps as a viable option to deter traffic cutting through the neighborhood. I think Kirk's idea that we have to do something with regards to the overall circulation pattern in not just this area, but in Johnson Lane and in others. Because as we're going to see, more and more people are going to look for ways to get around traffic controls. And later on down the road.
I also, I also think that we have an issue with the, with the, well, I don't know if it's an issue, but there's items in the code that require you to have two entrances into a subdivision. In this particular case, it makes it difficult in a layout on this particular site to accomplish that goal and still exceed the twenty units per, twenty units that can be served by, by one road going in and out. And so there are, I think, situations that, that need to be analyzed individually that we would need to update some of those code items in order to address like this one in particular, this particular project. But, and other properties similar to this in the future, because this is what we're getting stuck with, is, is the owners adjacent to some, you know, two roads or an intersection are going to want to develop and, and aren't going to have enough property to, to meet those setbacks. We had that issue with, with Perry Brothers. We had that issue with 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 Perry Brothers as well recently. And and they ended up adding to the project, you know, in order to meet those setbacks for that the road intersection. So. There are some things that we're going to need to address in in the code updates as well.
I appreciate you being on top of that, Tom, because it's a real a real issue for me. Neighborhood infiltration is a drag. And we really need to do what we can to inhibit it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Bryce, would you like to go ahead?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Bryce Klutz for the record. The last paragraph before the final sentence of Mr. Sheridan's letter discusses the intersection spacing. To Centerville, Dresslerville, Drayton intersection being far less than the two hundred and twenty two or two hundred and twenty five feet. Required by county code. Tom or Sam, could you speak to that, please? Is is that correct?
Tom, I think I think you're still on mute. Sorry, sorry, guys. So I'm off mute. So so that, yeah, the the spacing. Do that intersection is short of what county code says, but with it being a state maintained road. They the applicant or the project or the developer has gone to NDOT already and has a permit that has been issued. On this. So they've received a permit already from NDOT allowing that right in, right out only. There are some improvements that need to be made on state Route seven fifty six on the on the Centerville portion of the road. I believe there's a curb that's going to separate the center turn lane as you're going. Is that the the southbound on Centerville onto Dresslerville to to head. To head east on on Dressler Lane. So there is some improvements that were required by NDOT. To be installed to ensure that the right on right out operates appropriately.
Thank you, Tom. Bryce Klutz again for the record. So. Because we've got an end, the applicant has an NDOT permit, you do not need the code variance in Douglas County?
That's that's the way we were interpreting interpreting that. It is a county. It's not a county road. It's not a county maintained road. It's an NDOT road. And NDOT's given the application a permit.
Thank you, Bryce. Thank you, Tom. Mark, do you have questions or comments at this point?
Oh, yeah. So this is probably both from Mr. Rubin and Sam. I'm looking at page one fifty eight of the packet that was sent out and it shows. Two flood zones. One is an AO flood zone and somebody wrote two feet there. So I assume that's the one to three foot flood zone. And then on the other one, there's an AH. Are those both on the project site?
Yes.
And you're proposing to fill that in?
Yes.
And do you know how much it's going to raise the base flood elevation for the existing parcels?
There was a hydrology and hydraulic report done for this project. It's less than what's considered significant in the code. So it's less than what requires typically requires. What's considered an impact. So it's less than a significant impact. I don't remember the exact amount, Mark. It's in the H and H study, though. County staff did review it.
Okay. And who is the property that's to the north of this? Is that?
I want to say Frickie.
Okay. And is this project doing anything to buffer between? What I would call a fairly high dense use to an agricultural land? Are you putting in a six foot wall block wall fence or something?
Well, the the properties can be fenced along that side. We did reduce the overall project density by almost sixty, you know, forty percent. So there could have been fifty units. We took it down to thirty two. There is a a the Fulkie ditch goes through there and it's going to be piped. So that that ditch will be within an easement for the pipe that goes through there. So there'll be that buffers. There'll be improvements within that easement.
Okay, so you have identified which irrigation ditch that they're going to use to put their runoff in. Do we notify any of the farmers and rangers that this ditch runs through that we're now dumping more stuff into their ditch?
Everything goes to the Water Conveyance Advisory Committee, Mark, and all the downstream users are notified.
Has this gone to the Water?
It goes next week.
Are we out of order?
Sometimes it happens, just as a fluke of how things are scheduled.
I can I can speak to that, Mark. This is Sam Booth. The Water Conveyance Advisory Committee was scheduled to meet yesterday. And that the first or excuse me, second Monday of the month is typically their meeting day. Because that fell on the holiday, that was moved out to next week. So it was just the oddity of that falling on a holiday and have being moved out is why this is at the planning commission prior to the Water Conveyance Committee. But they would hear that as Keith indicated, all downstream users have to be notified by the applicant for that application. And along those that line of thinking, I would propose an additional condition today. That if the planning commission recommends approval, that they recommend approval with any conditions recommended by the Water Conveyance Committee. And then as as everything moves forward to the commissioners, we would include a report from both the planning commission and the Water Conveyance Committee.
Okay, so the applicant must treat the water, the storm water before it dumps into the irrigation ditch. And there's also an ongoing maintenance requirement that the homeowners association, I guess, would. Annually report to the storm water program manager in community development. When they do that, does anybody track to make sure they do it? And then, Tom?
Could I interject something real quick, Mark? So the 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 Fulkie ditch is getting piped, but the maintenance of the pond is is grid. And the pipe will be maintained by an HOA. So there will be a single purpose HOA form for maintenance of the pipe and cleaning the trash. But the pond itself goes to grid. Because they maintain drainage facilities.
So does grid report to the community stormwater person?
That's you'd have to ask someone else on staff that question. I don't know.
Yeah, I believe all the entities report back to the the amount of stormwater maintenance that has been done in Douglas County. Everybody reports to Courtney Walker. Is my understanding. I can I can I can call and verify and make sure that that's happening from grid, but I believe it is, Mark.
So what does Courtney do with this information?
And does she? She reports it back to FEMA for the CRS requirements for how much, you know, how much. Cleaning. So as the town manager for years at the Gardenville, I reported to her the last couple of years of that stint there. I I reported back to her how often we 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 cleaned out our storm drains. And which storm drains they were and how many, how often we did our strong drain manholes and catch basins within town and within the town and then reported back the weight. That we sucked out of, you know, that they removed out of those basins. So we record that with by dumping it out at DDI. So. She she gathers all that information and and then reports it to FEMA for our CRS requirements every year.
Okay, can you tell me what a CRS requirement is?
Yeah, it's the the CRS is is for the for our flood insurance rate studies. You know, it's to reduce, it's the number because we were participating in the floodplain. Ordinance in the FIS that there is with the flood flood insurance study, because we're participating in that, the CRS is is in addition. To those standard requirements that FEMA set, if you do a certain number of things as a community, your your residents get a reduction. In their FEMA insurance and the CRS number, I believe we have for Douglas County is a six. Which reduces and I can't remember the off the top of my head how much that reduces our insurance, but it reduces it down as my understanding. I. I want to I want to say forty percent, but I'm I'm not positive on that. But there is a reduction. In our flood insurance for all the all all the folks that are live within a floodplain. Because we participate in that CRS program.
Okay, this one's a little bit off topic, but I'm going to ask it anyway. And Keith, since your boss talked about this at a planning commission meeting, maybe you know the answer. But when we're doing a subdivision, we're creating additional parcels. I'm assuming there are additional parcels because we sell them individually. Then the next question is, does the creation of these parcels, would it prohibit this from going forward? Had Courtney Walker and the Carson Water Subconservancy District adopted their stormwater plan? Because that plan says you can no longer fill in any newly created parcel.
I don't know the answer to that, Mark.
Tom, you want to take a guess?
I I don't. I think with the way the requirement or the the update, right? You're talking about her updated portion of the code, the floodplain code?
Yes.
That's what you're referring to? Yeah, I don't I don't recall off the top of my head if that would if this would. If if this would be part of that. I think what we're doing is filling that in with a study, right? There's a small portion of the parcel that. Is being filled in with a study based on the development and then there's a ditch alongside. Along there that's going to get filled in with a covert and then the houses and the lots incorporate. I believe the lots incorporate that easement, if I'm not mistaken. So so that that fill area where they're creating after the fill is done, then the subdivision gets a final map. On it and it's created after the fill has been placed. So. Yeah, I'd have to look at that because I know there was some provisions in that. In that ordinance update that that excluded fill from being imported before you separated out the parcels.
Okay. So. I agree with Sam that we need to make this subject to the Water Conveyance Advisory Committee because. You know, they'll want to talk about the size of the pipe, what trash collection thing you put at the end of it to make sure big pieces of trash don't go in, who cleans it, etc. So. I have no other questions.
Thank you, Mark. Very good questions. Anybody else on the Planning Commission with questions? Brian, go ahead.
Yeah, sticking with what Mark's saying, you know, being familiar, I drive this way to work most days. So are we saying we're placing this entire, you know, the water retention and then parcels two through seven, we're filling that entire area? To raise that in the street's going to be lower? Can somebody explain that? I can't see the elevations on a flat map.
So as I understand it, basically, the yeah, the site is filled to the back. And it slopes towards which would be the south. So everything drains to the street. If that's what you're asking, Mark.
Well, what I'm saying is, you know, we have the drainage area over here, you know, if you actually go drive by the property, you got new systems, you know, kind of where the dotted line comes between twenty five and twenty four. You've got a fairly significant drop in the terrain right there, kind of where the street begins. I mean, that street's going to have to go down to that level to meet up with Centerville. So I'm wondering, you know, the drainage, that's going to be on the street level, is it not?
Yeah, it looks it looks, Brian, this is Tom Delara. On page one seventy, they show a plan. There's a plan on on page one seventy that has the floodplain. Line on it, plus the new improvements on there. And that does show, it does show that the street is actually in the AH zone. But what Keith was saying is that a study flood study was done to show that if they do fill the fringe of the floodplain. That it minimally impacted the the property to the north because it's going to push all that water right. In that area on their property onto somebody else's property. And and I don't recall seeing in the report how how high that was. What that difference in the floodplain elevation was, but the 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 issue is is that this goes clear across the Carson River from this point, you know, this is. Full width includes all the properties to the Carson River and even across the Carson River north and to the Housman Ranch area as well. And and so that cross section is fairly large. So you've got a small area that's now, you know, putting a little bit more. Impact or taking a little impact and putting it on to the the ag land just north of it. And it's it is pretty minor. Because of the section width there, it's really a wide section.
Well, I guess I guess what I'm saying is parcel two here, sitting right next to the water, the drainage would not be on an even level with the drainage, right? Parcel two is going to be where the fill begins to raise those houses out of that floodplain. Because I mean, just I mean, thinking about it from here, I mean, there's no elevation on this flat map. You know, we bring in the fill and what Mark's saying is, you know, we bring in the fill and then we divide two, three, four, five, six, seven. You know, remembering what Courtney's, you know, rules said, you know, slightly, I think he's correct in saying that we couldn't place the fill. And then divide the parcels. So are we dividing the parcels today prior to the fill? I mean, exactly what's the procedure there?
Well, with the subdivision map, there we're approving the parcels and then they'll go out and build those improvements or post a bond. To do the improvements, the improvements have to be complete before the the final map is recorded, which actually creates those parcels.
So what happens first, the filler or the parcel? So.
The fill. Fill happens first and we have to get a letter of map revision from FEMA based on those improvements. So their FEMA doesn't approve it until we show that that field's been properly placed per their. Prior approval or the county's prior map approval.
Yeah, I still think we need to look at that water ordinance and when we were, you know, reviewing that, I can't remember how it when it left us. I mean, I remember there being amendments. I can't remember it passed the county commissioners. But I still think, you know, bringing the fill in and then dividing, I think Mark's got a point that, you know, we're kind of doing against what we had approved on or commissioners that approved there. You know, I wouldn't want to be bringing in fill dividing by eight and then, you know, later say, oh, wait, you can't bring in fill and do that because of what the, you know, that ordinance said. And I don't think we're even discussing it here.
Barbara, did you have comments that you wanted to make?
Yeah, if I could please interject, one thing that we need to remember with the floodplain ordinance is that you cannot create residential lots. In the special flood hazard area less than nineteen acres. So what they're required to do is first they did their hydrology and hydraulic analysis. To demonstrate that they're not going to have any adverse impact on the surrounding neighboring area with their proposed improvements. Then they have to get the the grading and the earthwork done. So that they can submit it to FEMA and FEMA could say, okay, this is changing the floodplain because like you're saying with parcel two, it's in the. My screen is so pixelated, I'm having a hard time saying, but it's in the special flood hazard area. So we would be creating lots less than nineteen acres. So we can't do that. So the fill and improvements have to be done first, get a FEMA approved, what we call letter of map revision. Then they can record the map to create the parcel. So we're not violating code. And that's that's been a county code standard for years and it's also a requirement with FEMA. So.
So essentially it goes map revision, fill, parcel was kind of the order I would say.
Yeah, the fill occurs first, then the map records to create the parcels.
Yeah, I think that answers it, but I still think we're kind of starting that, you know, recent, you know, rule that we had just written. So. I'm kind of disappointed. I was trying to find everywhere in here. I'm going back through my packets, trying frantically to find it right now to see if this works because. That's the only thing that since Marcus said that that I, you know, I can't really see is because of, you know, looking at that property, driving by it every day. I mean, I've I've noticed the problems with building on that side. You know, the low the terrain is much lower on that side. I mean, six feet at least, you know, my height. So, you know, and not seeing it on a map, you know, that's flat. I can't kind of see what, you know, we're increasing and decreasing and the maps don't really tell you where the fill is going.
Right, but that that ordinance that went through the planning commission, went to the county commission, wasn't approved. Then we were supposed to go back and talk to the engineers around in the area and get comments. I believe Courtney has received some comments, but still not everybody. We keep reminding the engineering. Groups out there, engineering firms out there to 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 bring those comments, you know, to provide those comments to staff and. to, to, to bring those comments, you know, to provide those comments to staff and we're going to need to bring it forward. We actually have a meeting set up this week to discuss that one more time and, and try and get some more input from them. But it did, that, that's, those sections were not approved by that B O C C.
All right, so if they're not approved, I mean, obviously we can't consider it, but you know, obviously it's something we're going to be talking about, uh, you know, consideration I think should be given, but um, need approval, so I guess that's it.
Right.
Thank you, Brian. Very good points. Uh, Sam Booth, did you have something or Maureen to add on this subject?
Question, and I, I don't know if Sam Booth can do it. The, the amount of fill coming in to raise it out of the floodplain, they're going to have to put in a cinder block wall to hold that fill, at least that's my understanding. They have to hold the fill somewhere so it doesn't flow into the ditch. And my concern is on Ironwood, the Monty Vista subdivision, they put in a seven foot block wall and they are going to raise with fill the property level about three feet, three to four feet, that's my understanding. So then you have the residents who live there, their back wall is four feet from their property and they can build on top of that wall if they want to. But I'm concerned about height between the fill, the wall and whatever residence is going to be on the other side. Are we looking at single stories, but they're 40 feet tall? When you go from the bottom of the wall to the top of the roof? And that's, that's a visual problem. And I, I don't know, I'm just concerned with all the things, the questions that people have brought up, Mark and Brian, with the, the flooding and the fill and the concerns about traffic, that maybe we're just moving a little too fast on this.
Maureen, this is, this is Sam Booth. Um, I can just speak to, uh, I, I believe the Monty Vista project was a planned development um and required a perimeter wall. In this case, uh, it's just a subdivision, uh, not utilizing your planned development uh procedures of code. Uh, so there's not a required perimeter wall. Um, there may be a retaining wall uh that's designed in that area. I'm not aware of one. Um, maybe Keith can speak to that, but it would, it, my guess is it wouldn't be to the same, um, you know, it's, it's, if it's there, it's to hold back the fill, uh, but it's not, uh, you know, for view. So it's not going to be seven feet um from the grade going up. It's going to be uh going down to hold that fill in place. Um, but Keith, I don't know if you could speak to that.
You, you know, I'm looking at the grading plan and I, I believe they're calling for a keystone wall. Usually those are less than three feet high. Um, um, Tom might know, but I, and I don't see anything on here that indicates grades at seven feet at the wall. They don't have any wall heights at eye on the grading plan that I'm looking at.
Yeah, the keystone block wall will go up to four feet.
Four feet.
Depends on the type of block being used, but I don't see that even on the, on the plan.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions by members of the Planning Commission? Uh, Dave Akola, any questions or comments?
Yes, uh, with respect to the keystone wall being only four feet tall, I have built them uh 12 feet tall. So I think the four foot is uh bad information.
Well, without, without the reinforcing grid, geogrid behind the keystone block wall, which there in this case has a pipe even um in it right behind the, that area. So they wouldn't be able to put the reinforcing grid in if the pipe is going in.
Yeah, and I'm looking at the plan and it shows a two to one slope going from basically where the uh, where the um easement is for the pipe, all the way down to the property line that. So that, that tells me that that wall's going to be pretty small, maybe a foot um just to, to maintain that edge where the, where the floodplain is. Because as Barbara pointed out, you can't have floodwaters uh on the property at all. So that's kind of defines the edge. I don't think it's even intended to retain uh the fill.
Thank you, Keith. Anything else on your end, Dave?
No, not right now.
Okay, thank you. It's always nice to have uh good engineers uh, uh, on our Planning Commission and, and our staff and with the applicant. They're very valuable resources. If there's no other quick comments up, I see Bryce and Mark. Uh, uh, Mark, you want to go first and then Bryce?
Sure. So are the ditch easements marked on the map and we're not going to be building on the ditch easements? Or because you're putting a pipe in, you can build on top of a ditch easement?
No, it has to have a minimum 20 foot wide easement it is on the map.
Okay, thank you.
Bryce, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Bryce Plutz, for the record. I just want to circle back to the beginning um and the concerns regarding traffic. We, we've talked about a lot of things, but I, I haven't heard any solutions. And I'd really like to be able to land the plane and figure something out um before we get into a vote. Because I think that the concerns that Mr. Sheridan addressed and I would imagine anybody who's going to live in that particular subdivision is eventually going to have, somehow we have to figure that, that out. And I'm not sure what the answers are, but I'd like to at least know some solutions before we move forward.
Thanks, Bryce. That's a very, uh, very valid point and I, I agree with you. I think Mr. Sheridan's comments are, are well stated. So, uh, Keith, do you want to try and throw out some ideas? Uh, I know that's not a part of the process uh right now that we're going to, going to, uh, uh, part of the findings, but uh I do think it's uh something we ought to be paying attention to.
Sure, um. I guess I want to make sure I understand the concern first. I think the concern is we want to have something, it sounds like in the conditions of approval, where staff is going to review the delay study to make sure that the mitigation measures are in place to ensure that, or to the degree you can, minimizes the ability of cut through traffic. Is that what I'm hearing? Because that would be, I would recommend is a condition if I were a, a planning commissioner. That is what we agreed to do with the grid board and their engineer.
Bryce, is that something you're comfortable with? Uh, we could add additional language to the recommended motion. Uh, talking about uh, uh, delay study, uh, that's already in the, in the grid requirements, but we could add it to ours, uh, just uh a double, uh, double insurance provision.
Uh, Bryce Plutz, for the record, of, of course, yeah, I'm good with that. However, I, I'm still, I guess I'm still not hearing what solutions there might be that, that would come from that. And I don't, I don't know that there can be.
Yeah, and Bryce, the solutions are, are limiting. Um, the, the one thing that we talked, I talked to the traffic engineer about was looking at the corners and they basically bulb out the called chicane, but they bulb out the corners. So it makes it harder to make all those turns that come through the subdivision. Another one he suggested was that they have these signs and you, I've seen them um in various places around, but it has a speed limit that has your speed, it's radar controlled, so it lets people know, slow down and they flash at you. He said, based on the studies through IT, those have actually proved to be very effective. That might be another one. But ultimately, I mean, honestly, ultimately the, what, what could do it would be to gate the subdivision. And we could come as far as that if we, if there's no other way to mitigate it. Now, to gate the subdivision, these would have to be private roads. Uh, you'd have to have an association maintain them. And though, um, I'm not a personally a big proponent of gated subdivisions or private roads, that would solve the problem. Um, that, uh, it, it's unfortunate because under the way the taxing authorities work in Douglas County at least, you don't get any tax break for gating your subdivision, maintaining your roads. You're still paying, for in this example, that part of your taxes to maintain the roads. So that's why it's basically like a double tax when you do that. But that ultimately could solve the problem. If it came to that, we would have to come back and probably ask for these roads to be private and gated. But I, we're talking to the traffic engineer, um, Paul Sleggy, he did not feel it would come to that level. That's, this would be pretty easy to mitigate.
Thank you, Keith. Bryce Plutz, again. You know, ordinances oftentimes have a bad connotation to them. Um, I mean, not ordinance, but uh variances. And in this particular case, and, and this is completely unfiltered and vetted, I haven't thought through what the unintended consequences of it might be. But if there was a way that where there wasn't two access points and what, I don't know what challenges that might pose, if there was a way, a single access point, I don't know. I, I'm just trying to think if, if that may be, I, I think Tom kind of touched on that a little bit. If in, in any other circumstance, would that be a benefit?
Well, I, I agree with you. If we're not for the ordinance, we probably would have just a cul-de-sac at the end of Sage's Grouse Loop. And we wouldn't have an access up to Centerville. But because of the way um the codes are written and the entitlement risk of coming forward, honestly, with the variance, we just, we just don't want to do them anymore. I mean, how many times have I stood here and been told we don't do variants, not just this board, other board? So we, we honestly, we made a hard attempt not to do one, took a long time to get through the process to, to get the encroachment permit. There's, there is a lot of expensive construction going on in Centerville. So definitely be the least cost alternative would be to put a cul-de-sac in there. There's very little additional, there would focus more traffic on Centerville, or excuse me, on Dresslerville. Um, but not terribly so. Um, there's not that many more houses than you could do with 20. So it would be another 12 homes that would go out to the Dresslerville intersection. But it's, it is that issue of, uh, price of the asking, having to ask for a variance.
Uh, thank you, Keith. So at this point, I'll either entertain other questions or we can try and uh uh craft, if we do want to add a, uh, additional language to the recommended motion. Uh, I just wrote down something I liked to, to the effect of the applicant shall propose possible options to mitigate cut through traffic as an additional condition. Uh, I don't know if that sits well with people or if that's too vague or too specific or doesn't meet the, uh, the needs.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question? This is Keith.
Yes, go ahead, Keith.
Um, maybe I could throw out, and it could include the possible option of the variance to allow a cul-de-sac street.
Well, that would be an option. Uh, I was just, I was just leaving it vague.
Okay.
I don't, again, I don't know what the exact language is in the uh, uh, Gardnerville Ranchos G I D's approval or conditions. Uh, so maybe that covers it, uh, maybe, uh, um, maybe that, uh, we're just duplicating what they're doing, duplicating. But I'm just tossing that out there as an idea for those people who are uncomfortable with uh just leaving it open-ended, uh, the way we've got it on our, our conditions. Any thoughts or suggestions or if you don't think, uh, Sam Taylor, do you want to give us some help here?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair, Sam Taylor, on behalf of Douglas County DA. I just want to make it clear that if you're considering a variance, that you'd have to re-notice the, the meeting and start over again. I just wanted to make that very, very clear. You can't approve a variance at this meeting.
Yeah, I, I took what Keith was saying is he would, he would come back to us at a later date and saying, yes, this, this would be uh something that would be the mitigating uh, uh, mitigating solution. So, but I'm, I'm open to suggestions or thoughts from the members of the Planning Commission as how they want to uh phrase the recommended motion. We already have, uh, uh, as I think Sam Taylor or Sam Booth outlined, that we will add some language that says, uh, that, uh, we also condition it with any conditions imposed by the Water Convenance Advisory Committee. So that language go, would go in the recommended motion. And then, uh, again, those of you who are concerned about the cut through traffic, if you wanted to, to add other language that said, the applicant shall propose possible options to mitigate cut through traffic, then we could add that in there as well. Um, but I, I defer to my colleagues as to what you want to put in the motion. Bryce, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as a point of clarification, will this be coming back before this board or this commission? Or after that, we're done?
Uh, Sam Booth, uh, what's the next step in the process? Obviously it has to go to the Board of County Commissioners to approve the tentative subdivision map. And then I assume you just go through with all the commissions to make sure that they're, uh, they're met.
That's exactly it, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is Sam Booth. Uh, no, Bryce, this would not come back to the Planning Commission. They would, they would move on to the, uh, Board of County Commissioners. Um, uh, unless it's, you know, it's denied at the county commission level, uh, if it were redesigned or, uh, as Keith has, uh, you know, indicated, uh, if they add a variance uh and redesign the map accordingly, something like that, then it would come back to the Planning Commission uh for review.
Maureen, go ahead.
Like Bryce's idea of just doing a one entrance exit on Dresslerville, but that would require a redesign of the subdivision at that one end unless they gated it and only had emergency access running through there for public safety. But I, I'm not comfortable in approving this when there are so many questions out there. I don't want to just open-ended approve something and say, well, they'll come back when they figure out what to do with the flow through traffic. I, I'd rather table this and continue it for another month or two and allow them the time to redesign as needed and then come back and have us review it and send it on to the Board of Commissioners. That's our job. That's not the Board of Commissioners' job.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Christie, you had your hand up. Go ahead.
You kind of gave me an idea there. Um, would it be possible to gate one of the entrances to where everyone could use it to come and go, but to leave the roads then as public to where only the community members could leave or enter from that road? But not redo all the maintenance and whatnot?
Uh, Sam Taylor, uh, I think you were indicating that's not, uh, something we can do. Um, and they'd have to go through a separate process, right, uh, to get it to be, the roads would be private then and not, uh?
Well, that would, by leaving the one completely open, maybe they wouldn't have to go private.
Anybody want to react to that? My initial reaction is that, that might work, but uh I would worry that, uh, the traffic would back up. Uh, if you put a gate there, you're, you're, the, the access points to those at the, uh, the subdivision are pretty tight. And then if those roads got busy traffic, I would be concerned that, um, we, we'd be causing a little bit of a traffic hazard. But, uh, I defer to, to, uh, to Sam Booth or anybody or, or Tom on, uh, on that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um, the, this is Sam Taylor again for Douglas County DA. Um, I think that would be problematic because the requirement that you have, you know, two access points after the 20th house. Um, you know, how do you define that? That's, that's something, you know, is, is for emergency access, that's the whole point of it. I know that the fire department has allowed for access in the, you know, whenever you have certain like locks on, like the Knox locks, they call them. So, you know, would that satisfy the requirements? Um, I, I don't know, that's, that's, that's pretty, this is, it's like you're running a file of two different, you know, sections of the code. I, I don't know. I'd like to see what Sam and Tom think about that, but my initial first blush is either have the two openings or, you know, you eliminate one through the variance would be cleaner.
Yeah, I think this is Sam Booth. I would agree. Um, uh, the issue I would see is, uh, Christie, if you allow the public to enter the subdivision from one entrance, um, and maybe you're exactly right that the, that the residents within there could use the gate to get in and out. But then you've got cars that are stuck essentially in the subdivision and would have to turn around to go back out the way they came. Um, and because of the design of the street, there's not a cul-de-sac there. So then you've got cars that are trying to back up the street or turn around in, in individual driveways. And so, uh, if it was designed, um, you know, as a cul-de-sac, then it would be appropriate for one entrance. Uh, but otherwise I, I think you've got to leave it open.
Uh, thank you, Sam. Um, again, um, we're, we're kind of at an impasse here. If there's, uh, there's opposition to going forward, then that's an option. Um, if there's a, a way to get to this moved forward and, and proceed to a vote, then that's an option too. So I don't want to, uh, I don't want to, uh, go on one side or the other without hearing what my colleagues would prefer to do at this point. Go on one side or the other without uh, hearing what my colleagues would prefer to do at this point.
I did get an email from the district manager at the Rancho stating what the motion was at grid. It's a draft motion. Had, they haven't approved it in their, in their final revisions, not the next meeting. But the, I don't know if, if that was in, included in our staff report, Sam, do you know?
No, it was not. No, the staff report was done um, prior to the, the grid meeting.
But the grid meeting was a motion to approve Dressler Flat Subdivision located at the approximate corner of Dresslerville and Centerville. In accordance with the policy and procedures manual requirements for development as amended. As of the date of the application for approval per. Authority found in Douglas County ordinances 147 and 14, and 161. Subject to broad approval of potential traffic calming measures proposed upon further review by a traffic engineer. And basically he is just stating that the intent of the motion is to approve the subdivision with the concern that there may be. Additional traffic calming measures required within the subdivision. To dissuade traffic from cutting through the subdivision to avoid the intersection at Dresslerville and Centerville. So that's the email that Greg just sent over.
And I, I think Tom, this is Sam Booth, I think the, the takeaway from that um. Uh, that motion was, it, they, they made a motion to approve the subdivision with uh, or subject to the condition of the grid board approving. Uh, the traffic calming measures um, in accordance with the traffic engineer. Uh, so as Mr. Rubin said, Paul Selegi, the traffic engineer was going to do that study. Uh, so their condition was to approve um, that the grid board would review those measures with the traffic engineer. Um, and, and you know, being that the grid board is, is going to be who accepts these streets. Uh, and for maintenance, and I think that, that's their, that's why they're concerned about the traffic uh, impacts and, and cut-throughs. Um, I think that's an appropriate motion to, uh, to add, you know, if the planning commission is looking for a motion relating to the traffic issue.
Yeah, thank you, Sam, and thank you, Tom. That's very helpful. And uh, I, I think in this case, uh, the, I agree with the language that the grid board put in there. I think they're the closest to, to the uh, the situation and they're going to have to approve the streets. We're not going to have to approve the streets. Uh, I think that's what you're saying, Sam. So they're going to be the enforcing uh, agency here. So I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I have the same concerns that Maureen and Bryce and, and John Sheridan have expressed and, and Brian. Um, uh, but I'm comfortable with they've, what they've done. And I, I think we need, we could just defer to them without adding any language of our own. But again, I'll leave that up to uh, to whoever wants to make the uh, make the recommended motion. Maureen.
Want to make the motion, but I, I really think there are too many traffic considerations. For us to approve the subdivision as it's been given to us. I think that it. It should be tabled. I don't want to leave it to the GID because I, while they're the ones that are going to be enforcing it. This is our responsibility to work these types of things out. At least that's my understanding of what our purview is. So I, I think we should. Put this on hold and let Keith come back to us with a redesign or a request for a variance. Because I'm really not comfortable approving a subdivision. That is contingent on figuring out how to deal with traffic flowing through the neighborhood. I don't want to approve something thinking, oh God, okay, well, we're going to make a street and then put speed bumps in. And I just don't think that's good planning. So if, if we don't table it, then I'm not going to be able to support this.
Okay. Other thoughts on uh, on moving forward or not moving forward? Bryce, Brian, Mark, Christie, Tom, uh, Dave? Bryce?
Although I agree with Maureen, I think we ended up in a situation where we have a double-edged sword here where. Typically variances would be frowned upon and, and I know for me, it would be difficult to approve. However, in this circumstance, it probably would have been in the best interest of, of the community. I, I'm not sure if that ship has sailed, if it's worthy of coming back to um. It seems like the, the best option. Um, however, here we are and, and. You know, I, I kind of hate to put the applicant through all of that um, at this stage. When I think they, they did the best they could to try to follow what the code said and, and work within it and. And so. You know, I, I would be comfortable moving forward with traffic mitigation measures. Because I believe that the applicant took all that into consideration and followed the code and. Unfortunately, you know, sometimes it, it works out great and sometimes it doesn't, but at the end of the day, that's the code. And so. You know, I would, I would be willing to move forward with the motions that were put forth by the GID and go in that direction.
Okay. Other comments, Brian?
Well, I was only picking at the, you know, water retention area, just pointing out the fact that the road has to drop, you know, to get down to the Centerville area. You know, I don't have any real problem with it. And driving by, you know, I often design these types of properties myself in my mind. And I was thinking that logically that may be the only point for that road to go. I don't necessarily have a problem with it now that we put the right turn only because, you know, the hard part would be turning left with the left turn lane there. And we've, you know, mitigated that problem. Um, as far as people driving through neighborhoods, people do it. I mean, you know, should it be the county and the developer's responsibility to stop idiots? I don't think so. Um, you know, because people do it. I watch people drive through that new systems parking lot, you know, almost weekly. Um, people drive through the Sharpies parking lot to turn right on Gilman. I mean, it just happens. There's nothing we can do to prevent those people. And if we keep putting in these measures that people have to do, we're just raising the cost of these developments, raising the cost of the homes and making it more unaffordable for these people to even live in these homes. Granted, I don't think this is going to be an affordable product anyways. It's probably going to be the size of, you know, Rocky Terrace or those homes, but. You know, that's not the point. The point is we don't need to stop these people and require additional costs for them to do that. Um, what I'm just trying to get at is I'm afraid of going forward with this before we really know with that uh, you know, water conveyancy, you know, what they're, or not the water conveyancy, but uh. You know, they're going to come forward with the ordinance, you know, related to the water and the floodplain. So, you know. Tom's saying that we're going to have a meeting next week. I mean, I'd almost be in favor of a continuance to see where we're headed in that direction because. You know, we're going to approve this now and then say that it's grandfathered in, or we can wait until it doesn't have to be grandfathered in is one thing I'd prefer. Um, not grandfathering in a project that we kind of knew was going to have to be grandfathered in two months later. Um, I'd prefer to know those things ahead of time. And I think in this instance, you know, that would be the only reason I couldn't say yes.
Uh, thank you, Brian. Those are very good points. Um, Sam Booth or Sam Taylor? Uh, I'm not as conversant as I should be on this, but uh, we have uh, requirements that we have to provide a hearing. And uh, do we have requirements that we have to take action? Uh, and what uh, what complications would arise if we did have a uh, a uh, motion to postpone? Uh, the action on this till a later date. Uh, are we going to have noticing issues or uh, uh, code issues as far as uh. Uh, timely consideration and resolution of an application? Sam Booth or Sam Taylor, do you want to take a crack at that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I think um, the planning commission would have to have the applicant's consent. Uh, to continue this item uh, to a future date because we do have uh, timelines per county code and NRS that we're required to hear the item. Um, uh, it, it, the applicant's risk there, uh, you know, if he doesn't agree to a continuance, um, it's. From it sounds, sounds like from the, the talk here is that, uh, you know, it may be denied. Uh, I'm sure what, what the applicant would be weighing in their mind is uh, the planning commission issues a recommendation to the county commissioners. So um, with an approval or denial, this would go forward next month to the county commissioners. Um, so I, I, go ahead, Sam Taylor.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um, I was just, uh, Sam Taylor again from Douglas County DA's office. I agree a hundred percent with what Sam just said. The risk is on the applicant. Um, but we do need the applicant's consent to, you know, kick this down the road. So, you know, obviously the applicant's been listening to all the conversations thus far and has to decide for themselves. Whether it's worth the risk to continue and get a negative vote. And which case they would have to bring it back again, or, you know, continue it, you know, and hope um, that they can, you know, find enough um. Meat on the bone to appease the, the commission.
Uh, thank you, Sam Taylor. Thank you, Sam Booth. Uh, Keith, do you uh, need to consult with uh, any of your uh, your colleagues at this point? Uh, would you prefer us to take a brief recess or should we ask for other people to uh, to weigh in or just plow forward?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I think we'd just like to plow forward. I haven't um, heard anything. I haven't heard of any. Any solutions to that a 30-day delay or 60-day delay would resolve on behalf of the applicant. I just haven't heard it. We've met all the code requirements. We, we've been in line with NDOT since November of last year to get the encroachment permit. We actually submitted this project back then. So I think further delays is just additional pain we're not willing to suffer through. Um, if there is a solution that is, that we could get together at this meeting, where we would be very open to that. But just delaying it for the sake of delaying it, which is what I'm hearing, no, we're not willing to do that.
Okay. Thank you very much for your, your comments. Um, then what I would recommend is we go ahead with the recommended motion. Uh, on page 153 of the uh, of the staff report. Uh, we add as Sam Booth previously outlined, uh, with condition, any conditions imposed by the water. Uh, uh, conveyance advisory, advisory committee. And then uh, de- depending on the uh, whim of the, the maker of the motion, I would suggest that we add language. Uh, kind of along the lines with Tom's Delair had said, the grid put in there. Uh, with the additional condition that we would require the traffic mitigation requirements imposed by grid. To be a condition of uh, approval. So uh, I'm open to anybody else making uh, making such motion. Or I can make the motion uh, myself, uh, if uh, if people are uh, are uh, are conversant with that uh, that approach. What's the, what's the pleasure of my colleagues?
I would be in favor of you making the motion, Kirk, and let's see where it goes.
Okay. Uh, with that said, then I uh, move that the planning commission recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners of Development Application DP 19 dash 0486. A tentative subdivision map to create 32 single-family parcels. And one public Eastman parcel ranging in size from approximately 8,001 square feet to 25,402 square feet. On a 9.22 acre parcel based on the ability to make the required findings as outlined in the staff report presentation and public comment. And with any conditions imposed by the Water Conveyance Advisory Committee. And with the condition that they follow the traffic mitigation requirements imposed by grid. So that would be the motion. Would there be a second? Christie?
I'll second it.
Christie seconds the motion. So we have the motion before us. Is there a further discussion or debate on the motion? Bryce? Bryce, I think you need to unmute yourself, please.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm going to move to support this uh, based on the fact that it meets the findings and I believe the applicant. Did take into consideration what the, the county codes required, as I mentioned earlier. Unfortunately, in this case, it may have been more advantageous to the community or that particular subdivision. Uh, to have had a cul-de-sac instead of an exit onto Centerville. That being said, that's not what the code requires and um, I think if, if I'm going to be. You know, holding to codes and master plans and that moving forward, then, you know, sometimes, sometimes you win some, sometimes you lose some. So. That would be the, the basis for my uh, motion for approval.
Uh, thank you, Bryce. Anybody else so with uh, with comments on the uh, motion? Brian?
I too, you know, in support of this, you know, like I said, you know, when looking at the road and the access, you know, having driven that place, you know, I don't believe we're really going to affect the traffic that much. I mean, especially considering we might have mostly people in there that won't be leaving during the normal trip generating hours. Um, you know, just, I think it's unfortunate that I believe we were talking about the floodplain stuff, you know, last year. Um, and it's now September and we still don't have that um, in the code. I mean, the other counties around us already have it in their code. We do not. So when I'm looking to that and hearing Mr. Keith Rubin say that we're unwilling to continue because continuing will likely result in, you know, an adverse opinion. Um, you know, makes me take a little more grim view of, you know, the, the guys over there at R O Anderson, you know, get the information in, get it, you know, grandfathered in because, you know, two months from now you can't. Um, you know, I don't like that approach. Um, it's kind of a slammin' approach, but again, they've met the code as they say. Um, you know, again, the code is kind of playing against us in this instance and uh. You know, I was wishing we could have had this thing uh, sealed up sooner before September of this year, but it's looking like uh. You know, if you guys are meeting on this next week, it might not be before the end of this year or even before the master plan. So um. I'd like to get that thing in, you know, accelerated, but uh, you know, in this instance, it's not a reason that we could use so, to, you know, not support this project. So. Um, I am in support of it, um, you know, although unwillingly.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Very good points. Anybody else for uh, discussion or debate on the motion?
Yes.
Uh. Go ahead.
Nobody has mentioned the variance required between the intersections. Uh, I don't care if it's uh, NDOT road or anything else. The county code says there is a distance between, required between intersections. If they can't meet that, I can't support it. Period.
Uh, thank you, Dave. Um, I'll yield to any of the staff that want to comment, but I think the way I understood what Tom and Barbara and maybe Sam Booth were saying is. That since it's a county road and since the applicant has received approval from the county, we can't. Overrule or supersede the uh, the county's edict in this case. Uh, that's just my kind of layman's interpretation is uh, as to, as to how the uh, the situation is there. But I would defer to any of the staff to uh, comment further there.
Yeah, that was an NDOT road, uh, NDOT, so it's a state road, uh, there, Chairman Walder. Um, and that's, that's exactly what we were, that's what we were under the impression is that because it is a state road. That it's not a county maintained or um. Even the right-of-way isn't a county right-of-way. Uh, it's a state right-of-way.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Tom, I misspoke. That's a state road. Uh, and that's why they're, they're uh, uh. The, the information they've given to uh, the applicant and the approval uh, would supersede, supersede any county uh, uh, ordinance or, or ruling.
Development standards are county development standards. If you can't meet the county development standards, you don't have a right to take and make a variance unless you call it a variance.
Okay, Dave, thank you. Uh, I'm not an expert in this one at all. So Barbara Resnick, did you have a comment that you wanted to throw out there?
Yeah, thank you. Um, Barbara Resnick for the record. Um, Sam, I don't know if you have access to pull up that exhibit with the intersection distances. The applicant did provide that to us because the intersection, the street intersection distances were a concern to the county. So um, do you have that, Sam?
Uh, let me see.
So on Dresslerville Road, the intersection from Drayton or Centerville over to their access is 709 feet. So that's greater than, I think it's actually um, 660 feet that was required. Um, and then again on Centerville Lane, it's for the right-in, right-out that NDOT's requiring. From Dresslerville Road, it's 428 feet. But there's a right-in, right-out that's NDOT's jurisdiction. It's their right-of-way. And they're providing right-in, right-out instead of it being a fully functional um, connection because of the street distances. So the county had concerns with the intersection distances with their first submittal and required them, thank you, Sam, as you can see. From the intersection there, it's 709 feet from the intersection at Dresslerville and date and um, Drayton or Centerville Lane. To their access on Dresslerville Road and then 428. But the four, again, 428 was NDOT's call. That's their jurisdiction for that roadway. That's all.
Thank you, Barbara. Uh, any other discuss- Thank you, Barbara. Uh, any other discussion on the, uh, on the motion? Okay. Uh, seeing, uh, no further discussion on the motion, again, it's, uh, approval of the Development Application with the conditions imposed by the Water Conveyance Advisory Committee and the, uh, traffic mitigation requirements imposed by, uh, grid. So that's the, uh, motion we'll be voting on, and, uh, I'll, uh, call the roll. Kristy?
Hi.
Bryce?
Hi.
Dave?
Nay.
Okay, is there a finding or anything else that you wanted to add to your, uh, nay vote, uh, Dave?
Yes, they do not meet county requirements. Period. The inter- county requirements say certain distance between intersections. Uh, unless you take and call for a variance and vote as a variance, you still have to meet county requirements.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mark? Mark, I'm not hearing you. I think you might be muted still.
Sorry. I vote aye, and only because it has to go to the Water Conveyance Advisory Committee before it's final approval.
Thank you. Brian?
Aye, I agree with Mark.
Maureen?
I disagree with finding four.
Thank you. And the chair votes aye. So on this vote, there are five ayes and two noes, so the motion is agreed to. And we will now, uh, move on to, uh, Agenda Item Six. Uh, as everyone knows, we moved Agenda Item Five to, uh, the first position and that was already approved. So our next item is, uh, number six for possible action. Uh, discussion on the Nevada Attorney General's findings of fact and conclusions of law in file numbers one-three-eight-nine-seven dash three-three-eight and three-three-nine. Conclusion number three, the Douglas County Planning Commission violated the O L, O M L by failing to include a quote "clear and complete statement of topics to be considered" unquote, on its July nine, two thousand and nineteen meeting agenda. Um, I will, uh, provide, uh, some commentary on this issue and then entertain, uh, questions or comments. Uh, members having their packets the background information, the ten-page findings of fact and conclusions of law dated August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty from the Nevada Attorney General. I'll summarize briefly the essential information from the AG opinion. On page seven, which would be page three-sixty-one of the packet, they indicate that the Planning Commission's agenda for the July nineteenth, July ninth, two thousand and nineteen meeting failed to provide notice to the public that we planned to deliberate and possibly take action on the Park Ranch Holdings agreement as it related to the master plan update. The AG found our agenda was quote "not clear and complete" in order to give the public sufficient notice of the Park Ranch Holding Agreement and its effects in the master plan update, and thus an open meeting law violation. The Attorney General notified us of the requirements of NRS two forty-one point zero three nine five and two forty-four-one point oh-two-oh, which is that we must quote "include an item on the next agenda posted for a meeting of the public body" which acknowledges the findings of fact and conclusions of law, unquote. As Chair of the Planning Commission, I want to recognize the role played by Mr. Jim Slade, who filed this open meeting law complaint. I personally appreciate his efforts to assure that public groups such as ours follow the open meeting law and other rules set by the state, the county, and our own body. I apologize to the public for our past mistakes and will do my best to try and avoid future transgressions. Uh, I'm happy to, uh, entertain comments from, uh, Sam Booth or Sam Taylor at this point. Um, otherwise, we'll, uh, go to questions from the, uh, Planning Commission members.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Sam Taylor on behalf of Douglas County DAs. I just want to make it clear that the only thing that is required of the, of the Planning Commission at this juncture is to merely acknowledge on the record the findings of fact and conclusions of law issued by, uh, the Attorney General's office. That is all that is required. Thanks.
Yes, thank you, Sam. Any questions or comments from members of the, uh, Planning Commission? Okay, I think at this point, uh, we're, uh, ready for a motion. Uh, the recommended motion would be found on page, uh, three hundred and fifty-three of the, uh, packet. Uh, if someone would be so kind to make that motion. Okay, I'm, I'm, go ahead, Bryce. I'd, I'd be happy to make it. Go, go ahead.
No, it's, it, it's fine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess my, I'm, I'm not sure how to just read the motion the way it stands there.
Yeah, start with the second line where it says, uh, "We acknowledge the findings of fact and conclusions of law," I think.
Fair enough. Well, I make a motion to acknowledge the Attorney General's findings of fact and conclusions of law.
Thank you very much, Bryce. Um, Bryce has made the motion, uh, required. Is there a second? Maureen seconds the motion. Is there discussion on the motion? No, uh, discussion, then, uh, I'll, uh, call for the vote. Uh, Kristy?
Aye.
Dave, or Bryce, excuse me.
Aye.
Dave?
Nay.
Dave, do you have a reason why you're voting no on this, uh, motion?
Since we, since there's been a notice that we had an opening law violation, I think we should go back to the original, uh, document and rescind our approval.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mark?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Maureen? Maureen, I didn't quite catch you there.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And the chair votes aye, so on this vote, it's the, uh, si- there's six ayes and, uh, one nay, and the, uh, motion is agreed to. So now we will, uh, move forward to, uh, item number, uh, se- seven, or excuse me, the, the four discussion-only item, which is the, uh, uh, update on the, uh, master plan. And, uh, Sam, I believe you're gonna start off, uh, with presentation there.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Sam Booth, Planning Manager, for the record. Uh, just, uh, presenting to the Planning Commission today, uh, just an update and a discussion of where we are, uh, with the master plan, uh, text update process this year. Uh, we're moving forward, the applicant, or excuse me, the applicants. Uh, the, uh, consultants, uh, their assisting county staff, uh, and our, and our staff have been very busy, uh, analyzing the goals, the policies, um, updating maps for the master plan, um, reviewing language, uh, that is outdated, uh, statistics, um, gathering all that, all that type of information. Um, and, uh, moving forward diligently. Um, let me see, I can share a screen here, just a very short PowerPoint for you. Um, but our, uh, county communications team has been assisting us, uh, quite a bit. Um, you may have seen, uh, we've had Facebook, uh, posts, um, uh, Twitter, I believe also on Nextdoor. Um, and they've, uh, you know, pushed out the information about the, uh, master plan update, uh, to all their media contacts. Uh, we've had several different, uh, media notifications go out. Um, but we're asking the public, you know, what are your dreams for Douglas County? And, uh, we even have a hashtag, #DreamAtDouglas, uh, as part of this master plan update. Um, the important next steps that I just wanted to make, uh, the Planning Commission as well as the public aware of is that next week, uh, or excuse me, next week, tomorrow, uh, and on Friday of this week, uh, we are having open house and public, uh, workshops at the Community Center. Uh, Douglas County Community Center, uh, tomorrow, September ninth, uh, is our first one. Uh, we're gonna have a presentation, uh, at two times during the day. Um, and so we're, we'll have one presentation at eleven AM and then a second presentation at five PM. Uh, just trying to, uh, catch people throughout different times of the day, uh, if there's some people that are able to make it at five o'clock after they get off work. Uh, that would be great, and then we've got the morning session, uh, for those that are able to attend that as well. Um, so, uh, point I'd make there is it's not a, a, a full-day presentation. Don't worry, you're not stuck with us uh, from eleven to five. It's two separate presentations. Uh, we're gonna be talking about the same thing, so there's not something that you're gonna miss, uh, if you miss one of those sessions. Um, in between both of those presentations, from one to four-thirty, we're just gonna have an open house. Um, so we're set up in the grand view room in the community center, uh, and we will have presentation boards, uh, that are gonna, uh, be mimic very closely the presentation that we'll have. Uh, so if someone comes in throughout the day, maybe you can just make it on your lunch break, uh, something like that. Uh, staff will be there to walk you through the boards, um, ask questions, uh, answer any questions, uh, that you have, uh, those type of things. Um, you can also tune in, uh, and, and we'll be, uh, airing this live on YouTube as we, just as, as we stream the commission meetings. Um, and we'll be, uh, posting that link on the master plan website, uh, uh, the county webpage, um, uh, probably, uh, this afternoon. Uh, we're gonna have a second day of presentations on Friday, September eleventh. Uh, on Friday, we're, we're gonna try to do our presentations at twelve PM, uh, and then the second one at two PM, uh, with the open house, uh, more in the morning, uh, on Friday. So, uh, moving on beyond the public workshops, um, we have, uh, currently have our public survey that's live. It has been since September first. Uh, and will continue through September thirtieth at about five PM. Uh, you can see the, uh, survey link here. It's just a simple link, douglas dot woodpoles dot com. Uh, encourage any of the planning commissioners, um, to, to log on and take the survey. This is not, uh, the same survey that you had been presented with before, which was that long, uh, long-winded audit. Uh, this is, I believe, about twenty questions. Uh, it's really only two pages of questions, um, so it's pretty short and to the point. Um, but we hope that the, the public will weigh in. What we're, uh, the in- the information that we're seeking with this survey um, is input on the goals in the master plan. Um, and so our strategy for attacking the updates, the master plan, uh, as we've discussed with you guys, has been to, uh, do that survey and that audit of the goals and policies. Now we're putting those questions out to the public to say, okay, here are the goals that are in the master plan, uh, or projected goals, um, for the master plan update, um, and we are asking, uh, people, uh, whether they agree, disagree, or unsure about a goal. And after we receive that information, that it's gonna, uh, inform us on how to move forward, um, with, uh, you know, we'll have a quick answer to, yes, we have a lot of agreement on these certain number of goals. Uh, and maybe there's a lot of unsures or disagreement on other goals, uh, and then we can dive in to refine those items. Um, this does not include the, if you remember, we have over two hundred and six policies in the draft, uh, master plan. The survey does not include those policies. Um, that our next stage of development is going to be, once we get consensus on the goals from the public, uh, we're gonna match the policies up under those goals, uh, appropriately, and if there are other policies there that, uh, don't have a goal that's been, uh, deemed a priority for the county, uh, we may drop those policies and we'll present that to you as we move forward, um, with a document, um, as I perceive it, as we present to the Planning Commission. A document that will show you comprehensively where each of the goals or the policies have come from, uh, if they've been a carryover from the twenty-fifth, twenty-eleven master plan, uh, or if there's something new that we're adding with this master plan update, uh, we'll specifically call that out. So what's next, uh, in our process? Um, again, as I said, this, the public survey closes, uh, September thirtieth at five PM. Um, we are then, uh, gonna be feverishly working to get a draft of the master plan ready for public review, uh, as soon as October twelfth. Um, the Planning Commission, uh, would prepare for, uh, public hearings on October twentieth and October twenty-first, um, with a, uh, potential hearing on November fourth, if that's needed, um, after the, the twentieth and the twenty-first. Um, if the Planning Commission approves the document, um, we will then move to a public inspection period of that draft, uh, Planning Commission-approved draft, uh, basically that would run from November fifth, right after the Planning Commission meeting, through December fourth, um, that the public, we would be asking for you to review that document, to provide comments to staff, uh, to provide comments to the Board of Commissioners, because, uh, then we will move into, uh, December ninth through the eleventh, uh, potentially three days if it's, if we need that much, um, public hearings with the county commissioners for final approval of the plan. So, uh, just wanna recap, you know, we've got public workshops, we have the public survey. Uh, we are going to have the, uh, draft, uh, master plan available for review ahead of the Planning Commission meeting, so the comments can be submitted, uh, to the Planning Commission for your review, uh, and then beyond the Planning Commission approval, we're gonna have about a month of, uh, public review, uh, before the Board of Commissioners hear that. That's about all I've got, Mr. Chairman, to recap the process, but, um, be open to any questions, uh, any of the commissioners have.
Uh, thank you very much, Sam. Uh, I wanted to run through a couple of other things that we might, uh, consider as far as the process we're gonna follow. I think you've outlined the dates very good, and I'd like to also go back and, and get members, uh, feedback on that. Uh, but I think, uh, you and the consultant team have done a great, uh, great job so far. I've been participating, uh, where I can just to, observe, uh, how it's going. Uh, I do look forward to, uh, the community meetings, uh, tomorrow and on Friday, and I hope we have good participation, uh, either in person or online. Um, uh, I'd like, I like to, uh, recognize that, uh, we do have a lot of hard-working members of the Planning Commission, and, uh, I appreciate the time everybody puts in, and I, I just want to tell you that the, uh, the master plan update, uh, process is, is not gonna be short, uh, but I hope we can make it, uh, meaningful and efficient and thoughtful. Uh, we may have to spend a couple of long days. Um, I do expect, however, that a lot of the goals and the policies and the actions will be the same as we had in the two thousand and twelve plan and the two thousand and sixteen draft plan. Uh, we're gonna clean up a lot of duplicative language, so I think, uh, we won't, may only have to discuss a, a smaller number of items than, uh, than it might appear at first blush. We're gonna try and give members as much time as they can to review all the language that comes forward. Uh, and what I hope people can do is, as you're reviewing everything, is assemble a list of all of the goals and the policies and the action items that you get disagree with or want to, uh, discuss further. And then it would even be helpful if you can, uh, send that list to the staff and, uh, before a meeting with any suggested changes that you might have. So when we start to consider this and we do the, the October, uh, meetings, um, I'd like the staff at that point to make kind of a summary presentation, uh, describing the elements one by one, and then after they present the information on an element, we can take a look at it and see what's non-controversial, what's been, uh, in the same, uh, format as it was in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and sixteen, and kind of approve all of those as non-controversial, uh, uh, changes or things that were, uh, repeated. And then we'd go on to discuss each of the ones that were controversial or that people had, uh, questions about and try and reach agreement on those. So that's kind of the process I'd like to follow, uh, for getting this, uh, approved in, uh, in final form, and, uh, uh, maybe if we could go back to Sam's, uh, outline of the, the dates and consider that, uh, with, uh, questions from the Planning Commission members, uh, or questions on the, uh, the comments that I made. So, uh, I'll open it up to, uh, questions from, uh, from my, uh, fellow commissioners. If you want to just raise your hand or, uh, jump in, things that you, uh, need to ask about. Uh, Sam, do you want to elaborate? I'm, I'm kind of thinking on the, uh, the third item, your public hearings on the twentieth and the twenty-first. Uh, we might need as many as, uh, uh, eight or ten hours to go through all of those, uh, if we're gonna do, uh, uh, element by element and, uh, try and get some, uh, some resolution on those things. Uh, what's the, uh, what's the sentiment of, uh, of individuals on the Planning Commission? Again, I recognize people got full-time jobs and there's a lot going on. Uh, are people, uh, generally free, or would they like to restrict it to half-days in the morning or the afternoon or the evening? Bryce?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't, I'd like to restrict it to half-days. You know, if it takes a couple of half-days to get through it, so be it, but, but I think regardless of whether you have a full-time job, a full day of, of going through that is, is exhausting.
Okay, that's a good suggestion. Kristy, I saw you nod in your head. Do you want to join in?
I was gonna say, I agree for both of those reasons, both for keeping people engaged and then also for, uh, being able to work as well the same day.
Okay, would you be willing to do? Okay, would you be willing to do three half-days on that week or is that too much?
In the same week?
Just, just a thought. I don't want to cut the discussion short is my worry that we want to have a full and complete discussion on everything.
Right, I think, and we've got October 20th, October 21st, and then we do have the November 4th as, as the third date there that could be that half-day.
If we think we can do it in three half-days, I was thinking more on, on longer days in a, in a shorter conclusion day. But Brian or Mark, any thoughts or suggestions?
Well, I, I can be available for any of those days, so is Brian. You know, mainly in the draft text, you know, having it eight days, you know, that's not too much time, but I guess it's, you know, same as the public, we get, you know, time to have some questions. You know, are we going to be not available to see this before the public? Because we are, are, do we have to see it at the same time as them? Or are we allowed to give revisions as you guys are making?
I think the, the expectation, this is Sam Booth for the record, is that the, the commission has to see it at the same time that the public sees it. But if, if there's individual questions you have about a certain, you know, goal, policy, or maybe community plan, feel free to ask me those just on a one-on-one basis. I can send you, you know, some information I have as to maybe the direction we're going on that. But I hope, you know, I, I do hope as, as Kirk said, that as we move forward with the presentation here, that I can very quickly describe to you how we've, how we're going to be changing these elements. You know, we've presented at joint meetings, you guys have participated in joint meetings with the commissioners several times already this year. And we've talked about how we're going to pare the elements down and combine those. So I hope that there's not too much discussion about how that's being done. I hope to clearly convey to you guys and, and the consultants to do that, where pieces of the, of the plan are coming from. And I think again, you know, just talking about what we discussed at those joint meetings, we're starting with the draft 2016 plan because that's the plan that the planning commission had approved. And so we hope to, that the planning commission, you know, had, had agreed with some of those principles and, you know, policies that are within that plan. All of the discussion we've heard is just about pairing things down, about it being too wordy, you know, those type of things. And we've noticed all of those same things as we've been going through the document, that there are goals and policies that are repetitive of each other and different elements. And so we hope to clearly call out, you know, these two goals or these two policies are being combined to create a new policy and here's the way it's worded, those type of things. And so like, again, like I think Kirk described, would hope that we can get consensus on, look, these are, these are fairly minimal changes that we're making, just combining, editing those type of things. And if there's a new goal or a new policy that we are proposing, or that's being requested maybe by a commissioner or by the public, things like that, that that's where our discussion points will really key in on is, you know, debating whether or not to include those new or ultimately newly written goals or policies.
Well, yeah, I was just hoping, you know, if you finish element one, you know, we get a draft of it to be able to get the ultimate amount of time before October 20th. But I guess it's an ultimate test of how short you guys make it. If we get it on the 12th, can we sit, sit down, give it a read and, you know, it takes one sitting to read the new one? You know, it's kind of what, you know, some things that we've heard, you know, that takes a sitting, you know, passes, you know, I say criteria one. But then, you know, reviewing the changes from what we had and what is a very large plan, you know, then condensing it, if you do provide, you know, sections, you know, hey, we cut this out, you know, and that, you know, kind of like the redacted version, you know, maybe if we could get that in addition to the new text as a clean text, might allow us to see where those revisions have occurred compared to a clean version of how it reads without the, you know, all the red lines and everything all over the page. Cause I think sometimes that gets kind of confusing in itself, reading a document, a ton of strike-throughs and things like that.
I agree with you totally, Brian. We hope to provide you with a document that's going to tell you where each of the goals, each of the policies, action items, those type of things have come from, moved to, how they've been combined. A document just pointing out those as almost supplemental or an attachment to the proposed plan. So you will get it, you will get a clean plan and we hope that it stands on its own and that you guys will review that and, and be able to, yes, sit down and, you know, maybe not one night, but several nights and review the plan and agree with it and, and, and believe that you can clearly, you know, read through that document. And so beyond that, I think as an attachment, we would definitely have something that shows you where the different pieces of the plan have come from.
Well, yeah, I definitely think that'll be much helpful, you know, considering that 2016 wasn't passing or really working off 2011. So, you know, strike-throughs from 2016, if not past, you know, if they weren't in the 2011, you know, maybe we can identify some things there as well. I mean, or whatever we can do just to identify where changes are occurring. So I think that's where the public is the most concerned. What are we changing? What's moving and are these changes good for me is really what they're looking for. You know, I do think the text standing alone in a single read, I mean, that's, that's the first test. I mean, if we can sit down, read it, understand it as the commissioners who are used to this, you know, how does that then translate to the public on the changes is I think what we've got to move to now. So as long as we can provide that and, you know, within the short amount of time from the first hearing, you know, we'll do our best to get any comments we can and hopefully get everything flushed out before you guys go to the final meeting in November.
Good, good comments, Brian. Mark Maureen, anybody else want to weigh in? Dave? Mark?
So I can do the 20th and the 21st, but I agree that being able to work, you know, a few hours in the morning is definitely helpful. So I would say, why don't we do it from, you know, noon to five or six? That way we get more hours in, but at least we have the morning to do some work.
Okay, for those of you full-time or working on lots of projects, is that a good schedule? One o'clock to six o'clock or thereabouts? Okay, Christie, I see you nodding. Bryce, anybody else want to weigh in? Afternoons?
I'm much better in the morning, but I can, I can do the afternoon.
Okay. All right, I appreciate your accommodating. David Cola, did you have any thoughts either on schedules or timing or other comments?
I think that we need additional hearings at other locations. I think north end of the valley and south end of the valley should have a, a open house or a meeting to go over the draft.
I, I hear your comments. I made those comments at the joint meeting too. We're working through the process. I, I hope we can get as many people from those areas who can participate at the community meetings tomorrow and, and Friday, if not in person, then virtually. I think we're struggling with the question of how many more meetings will get more participation. As of now, we have just a handful of reservations for the meetings on, on Wednesday and on Friday. So my, my concern would be if we have additional meetings in, in other locations that it's not going to be very cost-efficient or add, add a lot of participation. But I hear you, Dave. I, I wish we could have community meetings in 10 different places. It's a, it's a difficult, difficult nut to crack.
And, and Chairman Walder, but one point that I would, I would say to Mr. Cola, we, we've discussed this and I think we maybe discussed this at the last joint meeting as well. But the, the issue that staff is struggling with is just finding a location for the workshops that's able to accommodate enough people with social distancing and other measures. And also with our streaming and Sosu TV that can accommodate those guys. Last year when we did go to Indian Hills and TRE for presentations, some of the, the facilities were smaller, a little more closed quarters. And so we're concerned about that. It's, it's much easier for us with our setup and streaming online and the distancing in the very large room, the grand view, you know, you have the stage, big, you know, what's normally set up as a cafeteria will be set up for an audience there. It can be very spaced out with the boards and the seating for the audience in a stage. And we're going to be, you know, we're, we're really trying to, to the extent that we can, gear this to everybody to, to join in online by watching the YouTube stream. And so during each of the workshops, we're going to be taking public comments through the comments that are being made on YouTube or through our master plan email, which is masterplan@douglasnv.us. So as we're on the stage and we're talking to the audience, we're going to be taking questions online from YouTube as well, trying to have that interaction. So if there's somebody who can't make it in person or just doesn't want to come in person, please know that you can, you can join in any of these workshops online and still, still be involved and still get, get us your comments.
Thank you very much, Sam. That was well put. Anybody else with comments on, on the process or where we're moving with the master plan? We'll try and do another recap maybe at the, at the October meeting as well to keep people in the loop with what we're doing and to, to get this message, get message out. But if there are no other comments, Mark?
Sam, can you mail that schedule to me? Email it?
Yes, definitely can. And we'll, just because I put it on the screen during the meeting, we'll include that as supplemental to the item today, the meeting. I can email it, Mark.
Very good, Sam. If there's no other discussion on the, the master plan item, then we'll close out the agenda and move to, move to public comment. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the planning commission. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person who has left a voice message on the Douglas County's public comment phone line, 775-783-6088. The voice messages will be played to the public and planning commission in the order they were recorded. No more than one voice message or public comment per person will be played to the planning commission and public. So the time is now 4:58. So if we have public comments now, Colleen, if you could play those?
Colleen Zapata for the record, yes, so far I have three. I will start with the first one.
My name is Beth Hojnacke. I live in Tychester State and I am concerned about item two on your agenda, the Martin Meadows development on Tychester and Gilman Avenue. I appreciate the concerns that all the planning commissioners related regarding parking. I totally agree that minimal parking is going to be a long-term detriment to both the residents of this new development and the residents of the Hayborn development to the north and to the Tychester development to the east, also to the church to the south. Overflow parking is going to happen one way or the other. And it's either going to congest Gilman Avenue or it's going to congest the neighborhood streets. And I do not believe any of us want to see that happen. So anything they can do to increase parking spaces would be much appreciated. Also, the water drainage into the Martin Slough. I walk my dog in the Martin Slough almost once or twice a week. And I am really concerned that there's going to be additional runoff that's going to pollute the new pond that the town just put in or affect the wildlife that uses the ponds in that area as resting space. Thank you very much.
Jim Slate. On item number one today, the proposed master plan amendment. When I heard this weekend that this item might be pulled, I emailed Chairman Walder to ask if that was so. He told me that it was and it was due to a typo. When I finally looked at the agenda item yesterday, it quickly jumped off the page of me what the problem was. It would have been a clear violation of the open meeting law that had gone forward. It was not just a typo, which is a typographical error such as hitting J on the keyboard instead of K. Problem was much more than that. It was an obvious mistake in the title of the agenda item for which there is no excuse. The title of the, of the agenda item is part that goes on the agenda itself and is therefore a particular concern regarding the open meeting law, which requires that it be clear and complete. This was exactly the problem last July for which the attorney general found the planning commission in violation of the OML regarding the park ranch master plan amendment development agreement. In this case, the title says that the zoning map amendment is from FR 19 to RA 10, rural agricultural 10 acre minimum partial size. The statement is repeated on the next page in the request. Reading further, however, suggests that the request is actually from FR 19 to RA 5, 5 acre minimum partial size. That's a significant difference and not just a typo. At least in this case, someone caught the mistake and rightly pulled this item. Otherwise, any action you had taken would have been void and the time wasted, as it was clear that the agenda item violated the OML. At least this time, no further energy or money was wasted by staff's mistake. As I understand it, however, at least the chairman and vice chair knew that this item would be pulled on Friday. That info presumably coming from staff. Why wasn't that posted on the county's online planning commission agenda? Still wasn't posted this morning before the meeting, nor did some of the planning commissioners know. Why is that? Why not let as many people know as soon as possible? Why have planning commissioners or members of the public waste their time on a Labor Day weekend looking through an agenda item, the only master plan amendment on the agenda that will not be heard before October? It doesn't make any sense. Someone should have posted it online in a timely fashion as a courtesy, even if not required by law. In addition, on pages 35 and 39, staff talks about subdividing the 40 acres into approximately four 10 acre lots. Does that mean it might actually be three or five 10 acre lots? Imagine if staff meant four lots of approximately 10 acres each, but that's not what they said. Words matter, wording matters, attention to details matter. Community development needs to pay closer attention to what they post to commissioners and the public. It is after all, the public record.
One more.
Ellie Waller, W A L L E R. The planning commissioners allude to the necessity of changes. They'll most vote in favor. This is astonishing. That brings me back to the community plan where Commissioner Walder asked if they're currently in sync with them. Well, yes, they are, but that doesn't mean that that's what our future should be. You continue to use the outdated 1996 community plans to say that these current future developments that you're approving are good. Well, maybe the communities don't want all that growth and we have no way to stand up and no recourse to stop them. With that said, I will mention the 7,000 homes again. A review and renewal of some of these projects should be considered and updated as necessary to determine their viability to the future of the community plan boundary they reside in. And at the very least, the developer providing a build-out plan. Some of these are over 10 years old. Again, I ask you to consider reviewing and redoing the community plans within this master plan update and change the consultant's deadline to next year sometime in 2021.
Colleen Zapata again, right now that is the last of our comments.
Okay, thank you, Colleen. We can keep it open for another minute or two. I do want to thank everybody on the staff who's participated today. You've all done a very good job. Tom, Sam Booth, Colleen, Amy, Sam Taylor. I would do want to thank the GIS staff where they work behind the scenes and they don't show up at the meetings, but they do a great job and I, I really appreciate their work. I want to thank Barbara and the engineering staff as well, the rest of the county manager staff who participates behind the scenes and Sosu TV as well for their good work. I want to thank the members of the public who've participated today. We do appreciate their input, whether it's on, on the comments or submitting written. We do appreciate their input, whether it's on, on the comments or submitting written, written comments. They're very valuable to us and I do appreciate that. So having said that, Colleen, if there's no other further public comment, I think we're prepared to adjourn.
No other comment at this time.
Okay, I will note that the meeting time is now 5:05, so we've had the appropriate time for public comment. I want to thank members of the planning commission as well for their good work and their diligence. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.